Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, 7:00 PM. Vote for local, Captain Lumberto.
President.
Captain Lumberto.
President.
President DiRico.
Chair.
President Obama. At the record of the present, the acting city manager, Robert X. Dacey, and assistant corporation counsel, Richard Verrick, and I will say it through the phone.
To the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation, under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have a bunch of public hearings tonight, but before we do that, I ask the acting city manager to give us the city manager update.
Thank you. All right, the first phase of the Armored Corps of Engineers project is done. Long Beaches will be completely open this summer. We're looking forward to a wonderful season. Beach passes can be purchased Saturdays. We have a legal building located across the Long Beach Drive circuit. The hours of operation are Monday, Monday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The weekends from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM until June 22nd. For more information, please visit LongBeachAmY.gov. In order to boost beach revenue and grow local business, the city has launched a $50,000 marketing campaign, which was recently reported in the news today. We will be primarily focusing on reaching people in DRC, Brooklyn, Queens, Nassau County, areas. The first leg of the marketing campaign will be using the slogan "Summer Starts Here." Advertising is already picked up. Social media and television commercials will start running next month. The Long Island Railroad will also advertise Long Beach for free on several kiosks and apps. There are different kiosks and apps as part of the agreement for the LAR, some getaway act, which will include a location of beach pass by the train ticket counter. The new campaign will also promote events at the beach, including the Long Island Fire and Beach Weekend, June, July fireworks, and a pro-circuit competition with the World Service League in St. Louis. The city is also partnering with local businesses to increase customer traffic in the summer. Thirty-five local visitors have signed up and the city has offered incentives to those who purchase the combination train ticket and beach pass on the LAR. For more information, please email economicdevelopment@longbeachamy.gov. The city of Long Beach is excited to announce the launch of a brand-new website designed by Dove Office, a leading provider of cost-effective state-of-the-art websites for local governments. The new longbeachamy.gov has a refreshed looking field. Residents are still able to access the well and resources previously offered on the website. However, the outreached site simplifies the user experience. The city has now made a significant upgrade to its website in the decade. Technology has changed so dramatically since then, and we've developed a new space look that's more informative. Residents and visitors are able to view a variety of items on the site, including city news, the calendar of events, and budget information. There are also easy-to-find icons that allow residents to take online payments and download permanent applications. Additionally, it provides streamlined access to city services and information through a more vibrant, intuitive site navigation system. Spring is finally sprung, and the farmers market at Candy Plaza will be open on Saturday, May 25th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Additionally, the market will be open on Wednesdays starting June 25th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
All right, thank you. All right, we do have a couple of public hearings tonight. We are going to start with the opening of the public hearing for the capital improvement plan. But I just want to let everyone know that the council is planning on tabling items one and two, which is the capital improvement plan and the city budget. We will have the public hearings this evening. We will take feedback from residents, but we do plan on voting on it next week. So if you're sort of aware that that's what we're planning on doing at the moment.
Okay, our first public hearing is for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the capital improvement program for the five-year period of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2024.
Okay, I'd ask the council to join on the front row while the commission of public Okay, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me from this far away from the mic? Back row, gone. Thank you. First, before I start, I'd like to thank all the partners that helped participate in putting this capital plan together. And in particular, my deputy commissioner, Joe Caruso, who's really my right-hand person. I say this all the time, I think if it wasn't for Joe, I might not have this job or anything. But he's been here for 30 years, and he's on top of every project that we have going on. Thanks, Joe. Hello, everyone. This year, we tried to look at the financial situation of the city as, and we reallocated the five-year budget. Now, that's not to say last year's five-year budget shouldn't have all the necessary projects in it, but based on where we are financially, we need to take a closer look and maybe spread out our improvements on infrastructure. As you can see, I'm not the only public works commissioner who's ever said this, infrastructure, other than his people, is the most important asset for a community. And without good infrastructure, good water systems, good waste water systems, services would slip. There would be more overlying because of maintenance of inadequate infrastructure and inadequate equipment. So for the second year in a row, we'll be presenting a plan for 2019 to 2020 that actually is less than the amount of debt that will be taken off the books. We will be taking nine and a half million dollars in debt off the books this year, and we'll be presenting a $7.2 million budget. Okay. So why capital improvements pay for through use of bonds? The reason we bond for capital improvements, most capital improvements are costly and expensive. So you want the people that are benefiting from that capital improvement to be the ones that pay for it. And that may be different homeowners in 10, 15 years. As an example, I put up here a new water tank, which you'll see later that we are going to be looking to do. A water tank can be bonded over 40 years. So if you own a home, and over the first 17 years, you're paying taxes, and you sell that home, you pay for 17 years of that benefit. The next homeowner, who might stay there 23 years, will pay for the next 23 years of that benefit. So basically, you want the people that are benefiting from the project to be paying for it as it's used. So in addition, you've smoothed out budgets. Otherwise, you'd have $20 million in projects one year, $5 million another year, and it would be difficult to have an even tax base. Just to go over the city's debt picture, as of June 30th, the city's outstanding principal for capital and other long-term debt is $109.4 million. Forty-three point six percent of that current amount outstanding will be paid off in the next five years. Eighty percent will be paid off in the next 10 years. And the city's percentage of debt contract and power is at 26.17% exhausted. That means by the state, we're allowed to, actually, we could have get into debt up to $400 million, or a little over. Not that I would suggest doing that. I think that would be irresponsible, especially in the financial situation of the city now. But it's just supposed to show you, really, there's been a lot of information out there about what our debt is. My debt is actually very reasonable, and it fits pretty well into our budget. The total debt to be paid off in interest of $22.4 million will be about $29.4 million. And that will all be paid off if we don't do another project in the next 17 years. Okay, this is the chart that shows you what that debt is. Green line on the bottom is what the debt payments are from now until 2/36 if we have to do another project. And as I said before, within the first five years, 50% of that will be paid off, and in the next 10 years, over 80%. So the whole thing to do, what we did when we did this budget, was try to push projects off and prioritize what we better. So projects are pushed off into this area here, where our debt starts to go down, so that we can afford to take onward debt. And that should give you a pretty good picture of what our debt situation is. The next thing we did, we looked at last year's five-year plan and looked at how we could reduce the overall plan. So we did this in three ways. We re-prioritized necessary projects beyond 2024. We used the remaining funds from previous projects, which were depleted and still had budget money left, things like road construction. We always budget a certain amount of road construction money, and then we do road projects. If there's money left over, that money carries over. We're already paying the bonds on it, so we figured we should use that towards new projects to offset how much more we have to create projects. And we included a lot of the building repair projects that need to be done in FEMA hazard mitigation plans that have been getting approved through FEMA. So as an example, the ice river has a problem with the wall. We have to mitigate that so that that ice river is protected from flooding in the future, and that wall will get repaired along with that acid mitigation project. All right, the 1920 capital plan highlights. In the general fund, we're looking at $4.7 million, with meaning $27.3 million in bond requests and $20.4 million in non-bond requests. These are projects that are fully funded by grants that we do not have to bond. In the sewer fund, we're looking at $0.88 million, and possible bonding of $4 million for other FEMA projects. The water fund, we're looking for $1.7 million and possible $1.2 million under through FEMA for part of it, and also for a grant that I received from the New York State Health Department to replace less service lines over the next two years. So how did we do on reducing the five-year plan? If you take a look, in the general fund, from last year's five-year plan to this year's five-year plan, we went from $62.6 million to $33.9 million. That's less $28,645,000. That's a significant amount of projects to offer, but eventually, a lot of the projects are going to need to be done. Sewer, we decreased from $5.8 million to $4.7, or a reduction of $1.2 million. Water, we reduced from $21.3 million to $19.7, which is a reduction of about $1.6 million. Grants, we did a lot more with FEMA grants. We went from $51.394 to $53.923, a plus of $1.5 million. I think you've all seen this slide in the form of previous presentations. This is how we divide the capital plan up in the general fund. We have roads, drainage, shoreline, transportation, public safety, grounds, parks, technology, equipment. In the sewer fund, we fund the collection system, the water push control net, and various equipment in both areas. Water fund, we fund the distribution system, the treatment plant, and the equipment needed to do all that. So next is a list of projects that we will be doing in the next year. I've divided these projects into new funds needed, existing funds, grant funds, bonding required, those grant funds, and no bonding required. And it's, they go down to the, you know, less importance in the project, or less of a priority. The first one is that self-tamed breathing apparatus require $165,000. NCA requires that self-tamed breathing apparatus for five has to be replaced there for 10 years, so this is for replacements of old SCBA's. $12,000 for automatic particulates, so we've got more particulates out there with patients that may have heart attacks. That will have to be bonded. This next one is a big number, critical infrastructure bulkhead, $20 million. This is the critical infrastructure bulkhead that's being funded by FEMA. Now, we're going to have to bond the $20 million, and that sounds like a scary number. However, this is going to be a 22-month project, and the way that's going to be dealt with is we will do a ban on this, and each month, we'll be able to bill FEMA, and then we reverse it, so we'll never get anywhere near the $20 million. But what we still need to bond is $20 million, so that the money's there. So we will be getting monthly reimbursements from FEMA on, like, smaller projects where when the project's done, we do a closeout, and we acquire FEMA, and we get the entire project. This one's to fund it as we move along. Then we have three boats of projects that are ready to go out to bid. North Shore Bulkhead on the west, and North Shore Bulkhead on east, which covers the two canals of Boyd and Tarragon, and the Stormwater Remediation, $4.5 million, which is going to cover National Boulevard, the... Park Avenue. Okay, thank you, Joe. That's why I need you up. Lot of information floating up here, and Joe helps keep it in line. So this is going to take care of two major flood areas. In addition, the National Boulevard flood area will give us another redone, you know, completely reconstructed block similar to what's going to be happening on Edwards Avenue. We have water purification projects of $640,000. This is the hard-won well sites, so that in future hurricanes and storms, our wells can run through the storm, through flooding. We're putting in submersible pumps, we're raising the electric in the buildings, so we won't lose water supply. But one service line replacement, I talked about this before, over the next two years, we have $611,000 from the New York State Health Department. You don't have a lot of full lead water services, so what we do have is we have what are called lead boost necks. Years ago, when they used galvanized pipe, you have to put a boost neck in to connect to the water main, so when the pipe settled, it was great. And they used to use lead for that. So as we do contracting work, we will be reimbursed the contractor's cost replacing that entire service with a lead boost neck. And in addition, we will be doing some of this in-house with our own staff. And their fine and their benefits will be paid for during that work. We have waste water treatment hazard mitigation money of $4 million. This would require bonds, but I would stay tuned for that, as to whether we're really going to end up needing to do that. We're working with Nassau County right now on a consent order, and what, you know, changes may come when we eliminate the waste water plant and convert it to pumping station. Edwards Boulevard, we have a $1 million grant, just a little over $1 million. We need to add a million dollars to that project. That project is 100% ready to go out to bid, this way for final proof from DOT, and that will redirect to the Boulevard, which will include bike lanes, will include safer pedestrian crossings, and then will include new drainage, which will eliminate a lot of the flooding that takes place on Edwards. Beach comfort stations, we're adding $1.2 million to this project. We had gotten $1.7 million from FEMA to replace the three bathrooms and the bathroom at Minnesota. The bid for Minnesota for a bathroom came in at $750,000. So the two bathrooms at Neptune and New York look like they're going to be a little bit lower than that, because each one of them also includes a shape-up area for the west lifeguard crew and the east lifeguard crew. In addition, this will be replacing our lifeguard station out of Lost Huron Sandy, which will be replaced at Riverside. This is going to be a state-of-the-art facility. We had a lot been put from the lifeguards, from the chief of lifeguards, retired lifeguards, and I think with their help, we've been able to lay out a very nice structure. In water again, elevated tank replacement. We have two storage tanks here. One is a standpipe that clearly we can't even use to full capacity of, recently over the winter, it built very badly. That standpipe is over 100 years old, it's completely out of its useful life. So our plan this year is to take that tank down, build a 1 million gallon, 1.4 million gallon storage tank, elevated storage tank, which will also, since it'll be the same height as the existing tank, will give us more storage than the existing elevated tank. Down the road, we would have $5 million in that for that project next year, and that will be bonded over 40 years. The other tank is over 75 years old. Eventually, in the next two or three years, that tank is going to need to be painted, and it will cost well over $3 million to paint that tank. So our suggestion, and what we're looking at, this is because of all environmental reasons, they have to build a shroud around the tank, they have to take the tank down to white metal. It's a lot of old paint has to be getting rid of in a proper landfill. So at that time, my suggestion, with that tank being here, it's end of its useful life, that really, at over 75 years, it really is, we would just take that tank down instead of spending the money to paint it, and we would build a million gallon ground storage tank, a 2 million gallon ground storage tank. And that would end up giving us over a period of time the full amount of storage that we need, as required by state standards. So that's the long-range plan on water. Roadway reconstruction, we still have $400,000 left in this year's budget, so we're, rather, we have $232,000 left in this year's budget. We're adding $400,000, and we'll need to bond $400,000. Distribution system upgrade, we have $820,000 in existing funds, and this is the last line on the chart, and we're asking for $800,000 more, and we will have to bond $800,000. This includes doing two reconstruction projects that you'll see later on in the roadwork, Boyd Avenue, and also... Joe again.
200 block.
And 200 block will be sold. Which, by the way, Joe and I, Joe did the majority of the design, because he's a professional engineer. We were able to do this project, where I could sign off on it, and we saved probably $40,000, $50,000 engineering, outside engineering people to do this, because the approvals needed from the Nassau County Health Department. Okay, roadwork overlays. Usually, we put about $400,000 here into overlays. This year, we're just asking for $200,000, because we'll be getting, we'll be asking for just $200,000, because we have existing funds of $400,000 we haven't used yet from last year, and we'll be getting CHIPS fund, capital highway improvement funds of $200,000. So we'll only need to bond $200,000 here. This is a list of streets that we'll be, like, we're planning on overlaying. East Walnut between Roosevelt and Pacific, Roosevelt between Walnut Park on the east side, Tennessee Avenue between Park and Beach, Walnut between National and Edwards, Walnut between Magnolia and National, Monroe Boulevard West Side between Park and Walnut, and the intersection of Monroe and Walnut. And just, I'm going to ask Joe this for a minute to say a few things. Joe has been negotiating with the PSENG, the National Grid, on all their work that's going on in the city, and as opposed to just paying for mid-fees and having them do temporary repairs where they will only replace what they serve, Joe has negotiated with them many roads over the last year or two that have been paid at their cost, at PSENGs and National Grids. Joe, just give a quick list of some of those roads. I know you know them right over here.
Yeah, because just, for example, this week, they're going to be paying Walnut between New York and Grand, that's a PSENG project, where they upgraded the electrical work, and now they're going to pay for those for us. Same thing on, you're going to be doing Delmont and Mitchell between Broadway and Walnut. And they're going to build an overlay of all streets to just, National Grid just replace the gas tanks. We're going to be doing, probably for other separate streets, we're going to put the Walnut Street between Pacific and Maple, and also Maple between Walnut and Broadway. So yeah, we do have an extensive list, which I hope I'll share with everyone. It's an ongoing program that we're looking at.
Joe has done a tremendous job negotiating with both those companies on this. Okay, in the next sheet, let's not get into a lot of the smaller projects. You notice the first line here is vehicles for the PD, two vehicles, a DPW heavy-duty garbage, night garbage truck, dump truck with plow, we were a little short, a $70,000 skid steer for the water department, that $70,000 need to be bonded, a mower for recreation. We just made a lot of vehicles that were requested for this year, because CMA is doing the study on capitalizing these purchases or leasing in various departments. So once that study is done, we'll probably come back next year, because our equipment does definitely need to be upgraded on that. Okay, improvements to recreation center, there's a lot of little things that need to be done in the rec center in terms of, we're asking for another $80,000 in terms of their equipment, in terms of their services that they offer. Some improvements to Magnolia Seashare Center, we had $33,000 existing, and we're asking for another $70 there. West End Firehouse, we're asking for $92,000 for a new bathroom, which that project will be bonded, but it will be done with our greenhouse crews. Streetscaping, we had $33,000, we asked for another $17,600. Portable radios for the fire department, they actually requested $80,000 for the next two years. We cut that to $40,000, and over the next couple of years, so they get all the radios they need to over the next two years. The police department needs an upgrade for prison cells, $40,000. The PD has an ongoing technology upgrade, and I believe that $40,000 is in the long line, it should be under listing funds. Sign shop material, we're putting new signs around town. We have $23,000, we're asking for $18,000. Miscellaneous equipment for the PD, they had $24,000, we're asking for another $20. The e-slag system, we're asking for $18,150 to upgrade that. We put in the $30,000 of various fencing around town. Roller rink scoreboard and netting, $24,000 is requested from the rec center. They're having an issue with pumps that are going into the skate park and hitting people. Citywide cameras, we had $7,600 left, we have $40,000. We're going to do this over the next five years, about $40,000, is get cameras around the city on boardwalk in various places where there are issues. The radio system upgrade, $20,000. We need to get some interesting $17,000. We need a new copier, $10,000. We're budgeting this year another second copy of next year for $10,000. Computer replacements, the city purpose officer, they asked for $40,000. Over the next several years, we cut it down to $20,000. We need new air conditioning in the server room, where all the servers are, on the fourth floor, $65,000. And the fire department needs a new server, a $20,000. We have $57,000,000 existing funds for consulting design services. We asked for another $90,000. These are the projects that we'll go out to our P's for and bring consultants in to do some of the design work. Sanding recovery services, we have $17,500, we asked for another $20,000. This is so we can continue to work on these HMPs and get all that work done. Sewer collection system upgrades, as you know, we've had a couple of sewer collapses. We still have $268,000 left. We're asking for an additional $100,000 on direct replacement, cut and bury, and we're also asking for an additional $100,000, up to $13,000, half the sewer main lining, so that when we have a sewer line that is near collapsing but tends to be replaced by lining as opposed to overcut trenches, we can save some money there. ADA bathrooms in city hall, we have $100,000 left. What we do in the six-floor bathroom, making that ADA compliant. Improvements to city hall, this is obviously just going to work around this building, there's a lot of work needed, we have $118,000 left, and this year, you know, last year, we've been asked for another $125,000. City hall elevator, we've already budgeted $130,000 several years ago, which we have not used yet, because it really wasn't enough to redo the elevator. Sagar, before elect was able to get us a $100,000 additional for community development, so we'll be not needing to bond anything there. Beach bathroom reconstruction, as you know, our guys are reconstructing the bathroom at the Pacific, and they'll finish up that project and work on the next, you know, older bathrooms at the beach, and that's artistic funding. This is a new one, sand screen for the dune. When the Army Corps did the dune, we had to have a maintenance aisle that we could maintain so that the sand didn't end up overtaking the boardwalk. So there's a 12-foot maintenance aisle there. Very difficult to maintain, sand's constantly blowing in. All they put in in their contract was sand fencing, as you know, they rolled out wood fencing. Our beach guys have come up with a much better fencing system, was sand screen system. It's about $365,000 through the whole section behind the boardwalk, which will help maintain the distance and stop the boardwalk from being overcome by sand. And we have a $100,000 grant for that, so we'll be only bonding $265,000. The assessment software that we use has been, it's outdated, and because of changes with the Austin Real Property Services, we need to look at a new assessment software upgrade. We spoke to the assessor. Probably going to be in the neighborhood of $170,000, but that whole group working together, and for the first year, we're putting in $50,000 to look at what the options are, and working with some of the other municipalities. Impact, the police department, this is the third year... This is the third year of the payment for software that they put in, uh, three years ago, 92,000. Uh, curb and sidewalk rehabilitation, we asked for another 150,000. Coffee machine reconstruction, we have an existing 230,000, $743,000 left in front of downstairs. Down the wastewater plant. We need to replace one of the flood removal pumps. Uh, we had 20,000, we're asking for 20,000 in new funds because we have 58,000. We have some pump replacements throughout the plant. Uh, we had 122,000, we're asking for an additional 130,000. Uh, water treatment plant improvements, we have 32,000, we're asking for another 50,000. This is in actually the treatment plant where we need to, uh, upgrade some of the chemical feed pumps, upgrade some of the, the pumps that pump the sand filters. Uh, and now the next several, uh, hydrant water service replacements. Um, we're asking for an additional 300,000. We still have 113,000 up from last year. And this is all work done in-house, replacing regular services and hydrants. Uh, we're trying to completely upgrade the hydrant system in, in the city. Um, the next several wall, uh, projects that are funded, uh, 90% by the Federal Transportation Association or administration, I'm sorry. Uh, security cameras at the garage, we're looking for an additional 3500. Bus replacements, an additional 5,000. Uh, and paratrain bus replacement for three of them, an additional 51,000. Bus shelters, 27,500. And bus stop lighting, 9,000. We're asking for, to do a tree inventory of 25,000 dollars, which will be handled by our operators, brought by our operators. Uh, and the reason for that is once we get a tree inventory done, we will be open to getting more funding uh, through, uh, through the D E C to do some tree removal and tree planting in future years. Uh, this last one, rehabilitation of central garage, 546,000 is existing fund. That's really for an HMP project to replace the floor in the existing garage. We're presently looking at some other options on the city garage. I know that was a long list. Uh, so overall, we're asking for this year 4.7 million in the general fund and we're asking for another 2.6 million in the sewer and water fund. Uh, you can see the layout for the next, uh, five years in the general fund and sewer fund and the water fund. Uh, big year in the, in the general fund, it's active 2021. And that's what we're gonna be asking to replace the tank. Uh, the tank that we, we have, uh, we have an engineering report on this. The tank will have a concrete stanchion with a glass infused steel pole. So therefore you would not have to do every 15 to 20 years to do the trench without doing all the painting. So its long-term cost will be more than ours. And that's, that's really it. Thank you. All right, while we get to several questions, I just wanna thank Commissioner Miranda for the presentation and Joe Ferrozio for all your work, uh, put together the capital plan. I'll let, uh, the clerk get situated and then I'll ask, uh, Commissioner Miranda to come up and answer some questions. All right, again, thank you, Commissioner Miranda. Um, so I guess I'll open it up to, uh, any council members before I ask my question. Do they even have any, uh, questions for Commissioner Miranda?
Uh, the 500,000 you're asking for one tank, uh, the next year, is that taking the tank down or that's just like a, a beginning thing?
That's, I think there's one that's right down the line here, that's easier. That 500,000 is for engineering services and also to, uh, remove the stand pipe. That stand pipe developed, uh, rather badly over the winter. We had a eight-foot wide by 20-foot wide, simple hanging off of it, which was not safe. And that tank is actually lower than the existing, the other, uh, newer tank, which is 75 years old. And as a result, uh, we cannot use the full storage of the other tanks because you have on you the water levels in there. Uh, so taking that tank down really will only, uh, eliminate about a quarter of the gallon of storage presently. And, uh, we cannot operate with that until we get a new tank. Just to follow up, speaking, actually a question I was in, speaking of the tank, could you go speak to the general lifespan of the tanks? And also, I just want you to put in said already, complimenting the work that was done on Pacific Boulevard. Standing on, if anybody had a chance to go down Pacific, can you guide me to read that? You guys have fantastic. Thank you, and that's, that would be similar to what we'll be doing on East Fulton and on Boyd. Uh, in terms of the, uh, now I forgot your first question.
Lifespan of the water.
Oh, lifespan of water tank. Well, they're not good over four years, but the life of a water tank is about 75 years. Uh, after that, it just, uh, you know, steel starts to, uh, to pit and it's very hard to, uh, to maintain. Maintaining that other tank was, like I say, people kind of, pretty much, you get $3 million to paint a water tank. But between the environmental regulations and all the repairs, and it's an older style tank, has a lot of cross bracing and, and what have you. But both tanks really are past their useful lives.
Just some questions, if you could elaborate in respect to the improvements that are proposed for the Magnolia Senior Center as well as the Recreation Center.
Okay, these are all internal building improvements. As an example, this year we had to replace the fire sprinkler system in the, uh, in the Senior Center. Uh, these are for really, uh, many minor projects that come up. Painting, uh, redoing bathrooms, things of that nature. You know, fixing plumbing, um, this'll, both of those are needed as well.
Thank you.
I have a question on the credit infrastructure. Um, you talked about the, the 20 million dollars, um, that we would be able to budget it, um, and do a ban month to month. Well, was that approved by people that would be able to?
Yes, with, with contract with people, what we'll need to do is the bonding company requires to put a ban down to over 20 million dollars. Uh, and then what we will, with people that allow us to do this project is each month, we review bills, make sure they did their available wages, make sure they did their, uh, women and minority business owned, uh, work. We would submit those bills on a monthly basis. And I said that we could figure about, uh, books after that when we get our payment. So the, the, the thought is that we would not have to, uh, to really, uh, go into the ban for more than 5 million dollars.
Gotcha, okay. Um, and then, uh, I have a question with, uh, about the, um, oh, the sanitation trucks. I know you really mentioned, uh, that where CMA is looking into lease to buy. I didn't seem to mention it here at all, is that because, because I know our sanitation trucks are dying.
Yeah, we have five sanitation trucks that are over 14 years old and, uh, three that are about 10 years old. Uh, and we're looking to purchase five new sanitation trucks. We're looking at a lease program, uh, which, uh, would allow us to lease them over a long period of time, I believe. And also to, uh, to have a buyout where they would buy them back at the end and then we could just replace them on a lease cost and have continually, uh, life of the sanitation truck, especially down here, is probably about seven years.
And where, where are they in the budget if they're not in the capital?
They're, they're in the operating budget.
They are, okay. I, I mean, I don't need this because if right now we're talking about the capital plan, I just wanna make sure that they were in there because I know we're desperately in there.
Yeah, it's at an annual quarter.
So, so that, that being the standard point in the operating budget?
Yes. They'll be at least without purchase at the end.
Uh, the other question I had is, uh, I know we've been putting some money away for the walks. Um, you know, the, the, I think anyone who's been paying attention knows that, uh, the walks is, uh, if there's sewer and water is, uh, could be a bad situation that we're trying to avoid, um, by replacing them before it becomes an issue. Uh, I know we budgeted for some last year, are we continuing to budget money for?
Right, that's, that would be in the, uh, the money that we asked for on, uh, just wanted, it was, uh, that's the additional 800,000 dollars we ask for system upgrades. We have 820,000 presently there. Some of that 800,000 will be used for, uh, the water vein on Boyd, some for the water vein on, uh, East Fulton. And then the 820,000, we, we did, we did a study, uh, with D and B. And we have a five-phase program to first, uh, remove all the water veins, uh, or put the water veins on the main streets, run services to all the homes there as a first phase. Then that would allow us to kill the water veins that are in the backyards of the homes. And then the next thing we would address in the next phase is the drainage and the street lighting in, in the, uh, walk areas, the sidewalks that go through. And then the last phase of that would be, uh, repairing wastewater system. Uh, we're still looking for some of those wastewater system because there's a couple of options that we have there that we're looking at. And I'm sure that's optional deal.
When you, I know we've been building up to this, when is, do you expect ground to break on that budget?
Well, I hope we can get it there for that project this year.
Great, that's awesome, thank you.
Just another question, how will the, the actual bus stop lighting, how will the placement, um, be established of the criteria? How would you determine which bus stops will receive the lighting?
I, to be honest with you, I'm not sure. That would be up to the transportation people, I have not really had exposure with them on that.
The money that's in the budget for the, uh, hybrid water service replacements, what percentage of the hybrids will have been replaced, you know, at the end of, like, this year? More?
I think we'll, by the end of next year, and John Moody's in the back, you correct me, I'd say about 60%, John?
Yes.
And then the new hydrants, well, not the prettiest and, uh, they, they actually do hold up better in the salt water, the saltwater case, so.
Um, next to the question about, uh, you talked about replacing the lead goos next. Um, in terms of safety of water with this, it's a small piece of lead potentially on someone's?
Yeah, we, we still continue to do lead monitor every year that we're required to do for the Safety in Water Act. And we've never exceeded any lead samples. And those lead samples are done at high-risk locations throughout the city, at people's homes and businesses where we know there's often lead goos next. Um, you know, then the goos next aren't the only source of lead in the home. We have grass, uh, forests in all the homes. Grass is a, is a, uh, is an area where, where it can reach. But, uh, the fact that we treat the water as non-corrosive really helps that. And, uh, as I say, we've never had an exceedance in our lead sampling.
Anybody else on the council that have any questions? Okay, um, we'll open the hearing up to the public, I assume Commissioner's better.
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. Um, I have a question, the screen, does it have to be on this side? Is there any reason we can't move over here?
When you say the screen?
This screen.
Oh, I, I don't know.
The reason I ask is because the sun shine on the screen and we can't see a damn thing. Because over here, it would be in the shade.
I'm, I'm pretty sure, I think we need to do, uh, by the way, on this finished phase.
Yeah, I would really reinstall, there used to be a screen that was right here in the middle. We're gonna be reinstalling that screen, where the screen went.
Yeah, you get my point, we could see it better.
It's also only because this is a less crowded, this is a high traffic area.
Okay, just in case you didn't notice. Uh, the other thing is, you know what you were talking about. We couldn't, aside from the sunshine, you know, the charts up there are impossible to see. So I would like if, in the future, those things be posted online. I know you can't make copies of all those pages for all of us to have. But if we saw them, is it online?
It will be online, yes.
But if it was online ahead of time, we could ask questions and take a look at it.
And we can change it up to, to yesterday.
Yeah, because all we could see was, you know, you said a couple of nouns, and we got this and we're asking additional. Couple of nouns, we got this, we're asking additional. So I didn't have enough time to catch too much, but one thing, how long ago was it that we rebuilt the West End Firehouse?
Um, Joe, five years?
Uh, it was 2009.
So they can do bathroom running?
There, there were a lot of issues with their existing bathroom, so we're trying to reconstruct it.
So call back the guys who did it, okay.
Well, that, that was, it's still under litigation.
Oh, all right. Um, and then also a tree inventory for 25,000 dollars. I know you said why you're doing it, but it seems like an awful lot of money to count trees. Um, and then finally, first I'd like to thank Inisa for speaking into the microphone because everybody else is back here and it makes a big difference, thank you. Secondly, um, I had asked this question last week and the answer was zero. But since the last meeting, how many times have the five members of the council met to discuss the budget? All together?
We have not met all together.
You should be ashamed of that.
I just made it meet all together. Um, and, um, this session, we are tabling this, so we will have an end of hearing next week. So we'll have a week to have the capital plan.
I hope we have time to meet together, thanks.
Next on the capital plan, Mr. Wester? Name and address to the record?
Long Beach, um, you said later it was not on the website yet. But what, on the website was the capital, a capital plan, is that a different capital plan?
No, that's, that's the same one. And, uh, they're also, uh, in the write-up for the capital plan, all these projects, all this.
You gotta keep it short because he's gonna cut me off.
Well, okay.
I, I'd like to hear your answer.
I just, I just reformatted it for the presentation to make it clear.
Okay, all right, that's, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, um, a couple of questions. What's the difference between a road overlay and, uh, redoing the road?
Okay, when we do a road overlay, we're just, we're just doing it in the cabin.
Just what?
Just the cabin, it's the asphalt.
Right.
Okay, when we do a complete road reconstruction, we're replacing the water vein, the sewer vein, we're adding drainage. We're redoing the street lighting, we're putting in new curbs, new sidewalks.
And you're doing that to Boyd?
Uh, Boyd is the one we have on our list. East Fulton is actually already designed and ready to go to bid.
Okay, that's, was my question. I'm not allowed to kiss you, but I will. After years, okay, uh, okay. On, you're doing one side of, uh, some of the canals, uh, like on the Harrow and stuff like that?
Just the two, two canals with the, those are the only canals we could put to do with the oil and air line.
Okay, and that's gonna be higher than the other side?
Yes, that'll be higher on the, if the other side is private, so.
Okay, and yet we talked about gates a long time ago. And the gates would eliminate the need to do that. But when the, uh, consultants came down, they never even looked at the gates. Is there any way the city can look at the gates? Because it would seem to save a lot of money and I know it's funded, but it's only funded on one side and the water is not gonna say, oh, I can only go to one side. Water goes to the lowest part.
Uh, there, there, there's gonna be a back base, uh, report soon from Mass County. I think they're gonna be presenting here in Long Beach on?
Sometime in June.
Sometime in June, and they're talking about, uh, tie gates at the inlet, uh, East Rockaway inlet and the John Beach.
There's billions though, $2 billion.
They fall in and we live.
Uh, sometimes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, the new water tank, what style was that?
Uh, the new water tank will be a, uh, concrete stanchion, which is the base. It'll be a column of concrete, therefore will not, the column portion, which would be about 100 feet, about 100 feet high. And then on top of that concrete column will sit a steel water tank that's glass infused, uh, as opposed to a steel painted tank. It'll be a bolted tank, uh, so that, uh, the tank can be built and constructed out of state delivered and put together on top of the, uh, of the stanchion. This will be the lowest maintenance cost tank. Any other tank could require a big tank.
Okay, last thing, the ratio of water? Okay, Steve, what? Okay, the ratio of water to sewer, as we... program has gone up since two thousand sixteen, twenty-five percent, that's the ratio, as water goes up, the sewer goes up automatically, why is the sewer getting so much, why is it so much more expensive to flush the toilet than to get the water into the toilet?
Certainly the treatment at the wastewater plant is a lot more complicated, and requires a lot more chemicals and a lot more processes than at the water plant. At the water plant, we're just settling the iron out, running it through sand filters, fluoridating, adjusting the pH, and sending it out, in the wastewater plant, we're bringing it to a grid chamber, removing all the grids, installing into.
But when you go to New So that will make all of that?
All that will be eliminated, there'll just be a pump station there, as a matter of fact.
And it'll go down, the price will go down?
Well, there's still, there's still debt, and that's what we're working towards, is trying to make this fair to everybody, so that, the cost certainly doesn't go up at least. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Loeser.
Commissioner, I would just ask, the sewer cost has gone up substantially over the last, you know, few years, my understanding is because of D and D regulations, I keep getting stringent, stringent with four more technical.
Right, well, because of our consent order for the work we've had at the downed wastewater plant, to be the ammonia and nitrogen discharge limits?
And who's the consent orders from, who?
The consent orders from the New York State D and D, and Long Beach Department of Conservation.
Thank you. See your hand back there? Name and address to the record.
Good evening, Sam Tendo, Long Beach, thank you for my nice presentation, I wanted to fill a bit of it on my way here. Thank you, commanding officers for sharing that with those who can't make it. Real question, quick question on the layout of action plans proposed, am I understanding capital, the capital plans for projects that are hugely large, or like they spread out over time, correct?
Well, the projects generally we put in the capital budget that will, that are over five thousand dollars and will last for, doesn't mean a period of time, or three years, anything that will last at least three years.
So what would determine that, similar to like lease of the garbage trucks, being that the operating budget compared to a capital budget extension?
Well, again, what we can do is that if we bond to the trucks, we bond to the whole truck, so we own the truck at the end. If we, if we bond them over six years and have a, a buyback at the end, let's say, you know, say a truck is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, for six years, we pay a lease on that, and then in year seven, when the truck is due, the, with twenty-five thousand dollars, you'll be bought back by the company that leased the truck. So, and we wouldn't be, we wouldn't get at risk trying to sell the truck to buy the truck, in other words, they would estimate what the residual price of the truck is at the end of the lease, and that would be guaranteed to us if they, you know, took it back, or, you know, we sold, we might guarantee we get that advice.
So for example, tying street renovations in the capital budget, I think it's on page fourteen, twenty-eight, twenty-six hundred dollars, it's a one-time purchase, it happened as current twenty, twenty nineteen, it's nowhere else, I see, I'm sorry, it actually is later on, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three, for two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy thousand. Now, my question is, is that project starting now, and we're paying for it later, to the two fifty, it's going to be borrowed at that point, or is it going to be borrowed at that budget year cycle?
Just on the, I'm sure. Yeah, that's, that actually, the tying street maintenance is just money that was left over from reconstruction of the sanitation area, so we're just throwing that in there. But the other projects are, would do the maintenance area, and do the, the hydra street area.
So my, my, sorry, my question, I made that a phrase, right, is that, are we starting that project in twenty twenty-one, are we starting that project, those projects now?
Well, that project will not be started or approved until twenty twenty-one.
And that's when we borrow that amount of money, or we're going to start borrowing for it now?
Well, once that is, capital plan is approved, yes, then we would borrow that money then to that project.
Okay, so right now the plan is in a vision, but only this year we're executing, borrowing this year?
Correct, we're only, we're only borrowing for this year, and this year's borrowing will not affect this year's budget, will affect next year's budget.
Okay.
You remember the chart, it's, in twenty twenty, you'll see there's no red area on the chart, but in twenty twenty-one, it's one of the first payments for anything we borrow this year from.
That was just, I appreciate your clarification, if you feel close that question to me of how it works out. The last thing is asking for a grant, have there been budget meetings with council members? And if so, how come they haven't been public?
Anyone's free to answer, I have, I was a council member about.
A council member about, okay, so there hasn't been generalized meetings on? I believe that, I remember hearing last time, or a few people heard last time that there's going to be budget hearings, they're going to be open, whenever there's three office of council members, attendants?
Any, 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 any question that a council member has or need, or they want to do on the budget, talk about erotic sheets, anything like that, we're free to do it right now in front of the public, and the commanding officers stream it out.
They have, they do, but they haven't been done already, so there's been individual conversations about the budget, but not as a collaborative team to figure it out?
We have done that as an entire body to discuss this budget stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Name and address to the record?
I got any, fifty-two Harmony Street, Long Beach, is there anything in the program for fare boxes? I know we, you mentioned it a few months ago, about buying fare boxes for the buses, we haven't had fare boxes for like five, six years, we're losing revenue every day.
Money is available in previous budget for that, just as a venture.
All right, we need us.
I thought we were waiting on D O T approval for, is that, is that correct? F T A approval, sorry.
Are we waiting on the federal funding?
We're waiting on their approval, approval of the box we want to use, is that correct? Approval of the big car minutes, let's just say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pajani. Yes, Mr. McInnes, you?
I can answer Mr. Pajani's question, perspective of fare boxes.
Please do.
We're looking to collaborate with the M T A in implementing a unified fare box system, in other words, using the MetroCard.
Awesome.
However, the problem is the MetroCard is going to be obsolete in two or three years, so as soon as the new fare media boxes are available, I believe it's going to be called Omni, we're going to be collaborating with the M K and purchasing them. It just doesn't make financial sense for us to spend money on a seemingly obsolete fare basis.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. McInnes.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Blanchard? Name and address to the record?
Thank you, Brett, can I, I'm actually quite happy once I have your team.
That's great, yeah.
When is the C M A report coming up, any general idea?
It's not just one report.
Okay.
It's a whole series of reports.
Okay, the one that had to do with the vehicles and just curious?
Oh, sanitation trucks.
Yeah.
That was the initial study, that, that, with respect to sanitation trucks.
All right, I'll follow up offline.
It was just for sanitation trucks.
Okay, so my question, I kind of agree with you, in your presentation, there was consultant design services, was that part of the economic department, does everyone have some preference?
No, those, the science fees are for, like, if we do Boyd Avenue, depending how busy, just Joe and I in the office, so it depends how busy we are, we would do an R F B to bring in a consultant to actually lay out for the drainage order and everything.
Okay.
If we have time to do it ourselves, I mean, we do have a lot of, of these bigger projects going on, it's going to take, you know, between the critical destruction bulkhead and the east and west bulkhead, it's going to take a considerable amount of total time.
I just asked you about that, because I didn't get to see the, the proposed by here Capitol for this plan online, and I saw that they were still wanting to decide right now development, and I was wondering where that went, because it just seemed dependent on it. But I'll, I can talk to you offline about that. You mentioned Saifar, community development, that he had secured some money?
Yes, he secured a hundred thousand additional dollars for us to use for, to approve of the city water levels.
It's really important to have community development, and now that it's gone, who's going to be maintaining that grant, other grants? That's just something for you guys, or actually for you to think about, because we need some money to fill that position, we cannot lose that money. And just a little comment for you, you know, as far as the road overlay stuff, just something for you to consider, maybe keep in your pocket and think about, there is a bill right now that hopefully will be pushed through an opening, that Senator Kennedy would put forward, it would enhance the complete streets law, basically saying that things like overlays must be considered as well for complete streets, so it's really just taking it further. So just something to think about, and I can talk to you then offline about that, because I think that's something that people, when we are just doing road overlay, we should consider in the streets. And the garage rehab, I know that's been a big discussion, I believe there's a little over five, three thousand in the funds.
Yeah, there's, there's an existing H M P book of computers in place before, in the garage, but we'll look at other options right now, the city garage.
Right, possible movement, if I could just mention that up, I have forwarded, and I can forward this to you as well, Brent, Council of Grant Opportunities from the M T A, the M T A Bus Facilities Program, that would actually pay eighty percent if you wanted to move the garage, create a new facility, this is the grant you're going to be looking at, and I, I'm not as familiar with it, I think.
Brent, Brent, did you mention that to me?
Okay, that's, that's what you want to be looking at, and I will talk to you as well, and just thank you, Inissa.
I appreciate that.
About the bus stop.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchard. Anyone else have questions about the Capitol Plan? Yes, Mr. McInnes? Name and address to the record?
Karen McInnes, Long Beach, I have just a few small questions, on the roll rate scoreboard, I would ask that you consider getting a donation, or donations for that, instead of putting it in the capital plan, I think there would be a lot of people that would consider donating that money. I also noticed there's equipment that's less than five thousand dollars individually, so I'm not sure why that is being capitalized, such as security cameras or bus replacements?
Those are monies that are left over, and on the bus replacements, those are matches.
Matches, okay. I also thought I saw a telephone system in here for forty thousand dollars.
That's, that's existing funds to finish up, telephone system that's been being worked on for that last year.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've noticed that telephone systems, you know, everybody's doing things online, so telephone systems become onerous and more complicated, so to just reviewing that, I, the assessment software upgrade is really assessment software evaluation, so it seems a little misleading in terms of fifty thousand dollars.
I have the assessors here, if you wanted to interject on that. Do you want to finish your questions, Mr. McInnes, and then I'll ask Bray to come up?
Okay, I've also noticed a lot of technology, so I wasn't sure if we have a chief technology officer that oversees each, you're the chief technology officer, so you're the C I O with recent backgrounds, so, so you evaluate every single technology program? Okay, for consistency and application and best practices? Okay.
Okay, thank you, and I'll just ask Bray to come up and speak about the assessor software.
Good evening, our assessment software provider in the near future is going to be supporting it software, so it's pretty much obsolete, it's not compatible with those then, and they're planning on upgrading and to impose this money, or we have to either find a new provider, or go to a safe program, which we have, give consulting, word over our dealers, and what's up, bridge programs, and I guess the building department, the tax department, to inform our ownership information. Would maybe the year to left using the current software during the mission, otherwise, yeah, turn on the button. What software does the county use? They use the Hyaluronic Technology Program, I think they came in ten years ago, and their software is about a lot.
A billion dollars?
Yes, it's assessment software, evaluation software, it's pretty expensive, and our software provider also provides the building department, the tax department, and the sewer, so it's all contemporary, communicates at each other.
Okay.
So you can't really upgrade an obsolete software system, so it's really going to be about.
No, they're upgrading the old software.
Yeah, they're, take what they have and upgrade it to new, if you want to.
Speaking to the mic, Dave?
It's, it's the old one.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
And in terms of the, like, the scoreboard idea of trying to get a donation, we authorize a bond, but we don't necessarily have to borrow for it, we can find someone to, you know, some groups out there.
Right, you just would put that in the next authorization.
And so, I mean, that's something that businesses generally will fund, it's a good advertisement for their name, so that, I think that's a good idea if someone could follow along.
Anybody else on the Capitol Plan? Any questions right here in the front row? Please state your name and address to the record.
Alice Stone, Long Beach, no, I'm looking at some of these things in the Capitol Plan, and I have a question, so when you do the budget, you reach out to each department and you solicit from them what they think they need for this coming year, is that correct?
Correct, they, they do.
Okay, so let me just finish, since my time is so short, so they come back to you and they have what they think is their needs for the year, do you then go back and question that, or do you take this as face value, or what?
Well, first of all, they, they send a form early on that talks about what the priorities, put all the projects in priorities, what the need for the pri, project is, is it replacing old equipment, is it new equipment, what are the reasons for the project, what, what are the costs, are their consultants going to be needed to do it, is there construction costs and the design costs? So they have a complete form that I send them, and they use, and it covers the next five years. After I get all those forms, I go through it, and then I meet with each one of them individually, and I go through and we discuss what they are. There's some areas, like Ray's area, that I'm not as familiar with, so I need to rely on his expertise in that area, the things that they, that I'm not, and I rely on his expertise, but on those projects that, you know, I have expertise in, you know, I can, you know, weed them out a little bit better.
Like, for example, copier, one partner or two partners tell you they need a copier, okay, so you look at the document that they submit, the copier.
Right, well, they give us the years, the age.
Has gone through X number of copies, there's a lifetime for each, each item.
Absolutely, as an example, for copiers, they had requested two copiers, we sat down and asked if we could make one wait till the following year, and spread it out, and we were able to push one away.
Well, maybe we can do that with a number of the other items, I mean, go back and, you know, fine tune, and again, I know you've worked very hard on this for a long time, but really, going back and fine tuning is an opportunity that I don't think, that I don't think we should make.
Okay, well, just so you know, the original request totaled fourteen point four million, we got it down to seven point two million.
And I applaud you for that, but, you know, that's going to be on our backs, and so I, I.
And, and very important to.
Let, let me just finish, please, so I request that you go back and fine tune this one again.
Okay, and, and one thing we should realize, that there will be nine and a half million dollars coming over by then this year, and we're only adding seven point two, so that's a second year in a row that we've really caught down, a lot of these projects need to be done, you know, essentially they have to be done, so we're pushing things out, and hopefully it's all done until we get to them.
Again, I applaud you, but, you know, as a person does my own personal budgeting, if my budget, if I don't have the money, I'm not doing these projects. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Name and address to the record?
Hi, so Lori Long Beach, thank you, John, for your presentation. John, just a couple of questions that I have, some we should already cover, these are extras in case anybody's interested, and these are mine. The walk's upgrade, it's my understanding that, I know we can't do it now, but it's probably, generally speaking, upwards of three million dollars, I would say, start to finish, at least.
Actually, one of the, actually, one of the service replacements, Joe and I have reviewed the numbers that we had in the report, and we think we can do the first phase of that for just a little over a million, and have everybody having water services, but it's going to be a little more costly, probably overall, between replacing the sidewalks and putting in drainage, the south of drainage problems, replacing the lighting, and doing the wastewater, probably it's going to push it when we're done, maybe seven, eight million dollars, so it's going to be done over a longer period of time.
And a phase in is what? And a phasing is what is the best way to do it? So it could be completed five years from now. Thank you. The, I want to just go quick because there's some things you didn't already cover. Monroe Boulevard, West Side, it's a road overlay between Park and Walnut. I've already named that, I mentioned it on here too, it's probably needed. It's right near St. Area, it's the church, Monroe Boulevard. I think it's, it's a home run. The one area, though, I think similar to that, that you should look at if you haven't looked at it already, is similar low condition exists in National Boulevard, which is right out here, Park Avenue to Walnut. My thought is that if you're going to do Walnut between National and Edwards, maybe an extended loop where you could cover, conclude that in that project.
Mike, with the drainage project that we do with Gosa, the phase that's going to take care of National Boulevard, that will overlay all of National Boulevard and redo the drainage from Park down to Broadway.
Is that National or is that Edwards?
National. Edwards is being done this year as a grant with DOT. National will be done, this drainage project, in the next year, year and a half, and that will be done with Gosa funds.
Okay, so that's-
So we'll have very, two very similar entrances down to the waterway.
Okay, so now into that question. Now, two areas that we may, probably already looked at, Laurelton Boulevard and Park Avenue on Eastbound, the Southside lane, right, if you point from the Laurel Cleaners to the Laurel Diner to Red Cross Street, there's a dip in that. If you haven't looked at it, maybe, because it's progressively worse. You've seen all of the other items I have in there. I know my time is short. Long Beach Road, the intersection heading Eastbound, just east of the traffic light. You have copies of what I gave you. You could, you know, review it yourself. The budget is online?
It will be tonight, right?
Oh, it is. This is a, this is a new type of, is that right?
The presentation will be, yeah.
Yeah, so just let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have questions on the capital plan? The actual capital plan?
John, just one more quick question. Especially with that Edwards and National. The city, some years back, adopted a complete streets program, which one of the aspects of that was using permeable pavement. Are we doing that in many of these projects?
We booked that permeable pavement for part of Edwards. It got to be very expensive. Edwards, we have a million dollar grant and our match was supposed to be twenty-five percent, which we put it at about one point three, but with everything everybody wanted done down there, we pushed it to a million dollars. And the air permeable pavement just went way over the, over the thing. We're still doing soft shoulders on roads that, that we, you know, to have soft shoulders, we're redoing the gravel pits in those areas that PSE and G and National were working on. So we're still doing some of that drainage. So it's just really a question of how far can we go with that? Okay. Any other questions from the council? No? Okay. We can keep that hearing open and hold with nice hearing.
Our second public hearing is for the purpose of giving citizens adequate opportunities to publicly present their views on a general summary of the proposal for the July 1st, 2019, and June 30th, 2020.
Okay, I'll start with the council. Does the council have any follow-up questions for Mrs. Hightower or City Manager at PSE I have a couple of questions. So according to my calculations, I guess eighty percent of our, and I guess common knowledge at this point now, eighty percent of our budget is approximately wages and benefits, and approximately thirteen or fourteen percent of debt service. Is that correct?
About seventy-four percent is wages and benefits, and about, sorry, seventy-six. And then about fourteen percent is debt service.
Seventy-six.
So it's over about ninety percent.
Okay. So that leaves us a little room for, what am I called discretionary?
Right, also, what I'd also want to say, we talk about discretionary items, and there are such tippies like the sorting of the garbage, which, which is not in, so that ninety percent of it is really not discretionary. There are a lot of items that are so contractual or required in that last kind of stuff.
So talking to residents, the one thing that often comes up is overtime, and it's something that we could possibly actually control, you know? And it seems that there's some departments that are, you know, have much higher overtime. And I base, I base my calculations on as a percentage of the overall, overall cost of salaries to try and figure out, you know, how they match up. And I guess our emergency services are much higher than most of the other departments, actually way higher.
Which is industry standard over most emergency services.
Industry standard, okay. It seems like the biggest overtime, or our largest overtime budget rather, which I got the seventeen percent of salaries, would be for our fire protection. And I just wanted to know why that is. Is there, is there a way we can control that? I know we did put controls on a couple of years ago. Are those controls working? Why is the overtime so high? You know?
Rob, can you speak to why it's so, why it's so high and what drives it? I can speak to it.
Well, we wouldn't, I mean, generally what drives it are the twenty-four hour tours. That's what causes overtime in the fire department and also to the police department, although it's greater in the aggregate than the police department.
Or it's a police department?
Yeah, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit less in terms of what they are as a percentage in their income. But that's, that's a function of the twenty-four hour tour.
So if someone's taking a vacation day or something like that, I mean, in advance, and reschedule someone for that tour, it's not necessarily overtime tour, no?
It all depends, but it's not always scheduled in advance. We oftentimes don't. Six days. So obviously, as vacations, there is not anything that requires us to give any, any advance notes that allow us to plan along the lines of what you're accomplishing right now.
So it, but it has come down quite a bit, right? The last few years, hundreds of thousands of dollars in that. I see it almost nine hundred thousand dollars a few years ago. Is that right?
Yeah, so that is a result of a collaborative effort between the city and the fire department. So we all sat together, tried to come up with a way to make it a little more sustainable going forward. So there was an agreement that certain types of overtime would be capped, which is basically non, non, can't go anywhere. So overtime isn't necessarily needed for emergency services. So there's two pieces to that. The first reason why we capped is the, the fund was restructured, so paramedics do make up a lot of that overtime and they are paid at a lower rate than firefighters. But the firefighters did agree to work as much overtime as possible and allow under GOL rules at straight time. They also agreed to take certain highway and other time and banking that they'd pay out for as well. So that, so that's what's been able to curb it down over the last couple of years.
So we're saving overtime dollars by banking that time that they're going to get paid out in the future?
Some of it, yes.
Okay. So these caps are working?
They are. So last year, the first year of the cap, there was a short amount of time. Again, there's always a, you know, a period adjustment. There was, so we track quarterly, so they get a certain amount per quarter. And then the cap overtime is tracked, and should they go over the cap in a given quarter, they have to then take measures to get back below their cap. At the same time, if they're under the cap from a given quarter, that, that amount that's left for quarters except for the last quarter, because you can't for fiscal years. But if they're then under the cap for that quarter, then they get to add that to the next quarter.
Gotcha.
So that should they go over in a given quarter, if they get a quarter or a certain amount of time.
Gotcha. And, and the agreement with that was a minimum manning agreement?
That was the consideration, the practice consideration.
Okay. Okay, so then I guess the question is, can we lower that overtime?
We have. If the budget actually initially, when we did it, the first year, we budgeted five hundred fifty thousand dollars overtime for that department. And I mean, this year's budget is just over five hundred thousand.
But according, according to my calculations, they're at about seventy percent is, I think, the highest of, of regular salaries, so it's the highest overtime as a percentage of salary. Can that be lowered? Like, if we just made it ten percent, for instance, would there be any way to, instead of seventy, so would there be any way to, to the department to stay in those?
I don't know if so. But at the same time that we made the agreement to come down to make the overtime cost more as they were going forward, we also agreed to budget correctly for it, because that was one of the big items that New York State proposed to the city that really wasn't done well, that we were not budgeting correctly for. So at the same time that we came down to the actual cost, we had to come up with a budget, which is what we are properly budgeting for.
Okay, okay. All right, I'd like to thank the fire department for cooperating with the city and agreeing to these caps that apparently seem to be working, so I thank them. I guess we'll go on to the police department with the second highest overtime as a percentage of salary, but overall the highest overtime in terms of dollars spent. I don't know if you want to answer it, or if Commissioner wants to come up and speak to the overtime budget of the police department?
I'll take the Commissioner. I'll probably just want.
Now, I do also see the police department budget for overtime has come down over some time, but if you could just speak to, you know, why is it?
There are a couple of factors that drive the police overtime. The first one is in 2014, an orchestration was given, and the police budget went from regular salary, but it was nine million, sixty-seven thousand, a hundred and twenty-seven dollars, to ten million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, which reflects on the overtime rate. So all the overtime rates went up, and the overtime that was spent in 2014 was one million, one hundred and ninety-six, and in 2018 was one million, one hundred and thirty-three. So it is right in line with the rate increase. Additionally, we also have the steady tour rate, which means housework, same floors every day.
Every year?
Every year, yes. And then we, by the way, we do bid on vacation in November, government of the following year, so we can schedule around that to ensure that we don't have any problem with stepping.
Steady tours for the year, so you work nights for the year, or you work days for the year?
Yes.
Okay.
The business was our eight in the morning till six at night, one in the afternoon till three in the afternoon to one in the morning, six at night to four in the morning, and ten at night daily. So there is, there's a lot, so we can alleviate the problem of overtime. The two biggest overtime areas for scheduling are from six at night to ten, and from four in the morning to eight, otherwise we have overlap.
Gotcha.
The other issue is with this state tour agreement, one of my most prolific workers works very thanks, and he makes a tremendous amount of progress, and he was mostly willing to do E W Y or E W R drugs. And that normally requires two or three years, one in the M V and then four years. All of that is on overtime in the daytime, and it's all on the subpoena, so there's no way to get around that.
Right. And you want him out there doing that, so?
Yes, so that, that is, in essence, the question of the business.
Gotcha.
The department has been ravaged with injuries over the last year, which, over the spring break, we had ninety-six straight hours of that course overtime, because all three sergeants on that side, Ketter.
That side meaning one of the?
The A side, completely the A side. So they all-
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get the A side is one of the steady tours?
Yeah, no, it is two platoons. It's A, the A works four days on and four days off, four days on, four days off.
Gotcha.
Then inside those platoons are those squad sides that I talked about, eight in the morning till six at night, three to one, and so on.
Okay.
So on this one, on this one side, all three sergeants, there's four sergeants on site, three were hurt and one found vacation. So that's about ninety-six straight hours of overtime at sergeant's rank.
There's nothing you can do about that?
There's nothing we can do about that. So between the raise that was granted and keeping the overtime law stable, created a deficit, as well as the fact that they were steady tours, and now all of the administrative foot staff has to be done on overtime and in day tour, and there are all more risks made at night and after the hour at daytime. And then the third factor is the destination of injuries.
And do we, we have a minimum manning, minimum stacking agreement?
Yes, we have, we spoke of steady tours agreement.
Okay. Is there, does this certain amount of police officers have to be working at overtime?
Yes.
Is that mandated by the state, or that's a personal agreement with the collective bargaining agreement and the city?
It's a collective bargaining agreement. It's a, it's a, and it's for the steady tour specifically.
Is there a state standard, or is there a police officer standard for, you know, per square mile, and do police officers should be working?
Not that I ever-
I'm just curious. Okay. So would it be your opinion that if we, same question that I posed to Mrs. Hightower, if we just slashed, you know, ten percent of overtime budget, is that something that the police department would?
Absolutely not. I agree. And if you look at 2007, the overtime was four point three million, and 2018 was one point four, if we hired a few officers or, you know, to put more under control, we're rushing overtime too. So we are still managing under, but actually because they have a new, new office, they should help with overtime. I do recognize going so long.
If you look at the first one on my budget, that's, that's a direct result of regular salaries. Now, that should be at about ninety-two percent right now, and it's much lower than that, and that's because we brought in a lot of young guys in my opinion by over eighteen police officers that replace it. We didn't stand it all, and we're actually still down on those.
How many police officers do we have total?
We have six, nine now with budgeting of seventy.
Okay, I don't, I don't know. Is there any more questions, Commissioner? No? Okay, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, I really appreciate it. Okay, does the council have any questions before you go up to the floor?
Yeah, the, the state comptroller pointed out that we have about one point nine million dollars in the upcoming budget for termination salaries, but that for the last three fiscal years, we've averaged two point two million dollars. Can you address why we're sticking with that, that number we've historically been hitting, two point two?
So what we do when we, when we look at that number is we take what we know. So there are people who are already separated from service that get paid out over three to five years in any contract agreement. So we already know a good portion of what will actually be paid out. We then, you know, speak to department heads to determine whether or not they have any major retirements that they feel are coming up, and we then, we add a little bit to that number to allow for possible retirements. What's been happening the last few years is based upon, you know, high earnings or understanding error and whatnot, there has been a slew of high level retirement goals at the police level and the CSE level that has upped that number and, and upped our average. So again, while we attempt to figure any of the placement number, in the end, actual retirements will always be different.
So if it's just authorizing a number, why won't we go high? Because you can't actually borrow what you'll need for payments, right?
Correct. So we have one point nine million budgeted in the, you know, in the document. We will, however, ask you for anywhere from two point two, two point five million authorization to allow for any new retirements, not have to come back and ask me for another authorization, which is what we just had to do recently. But let's say you guys authorized two point five million dollars for next year's separation payments. If in the end, if the city only paid out one point seven million, that is all the city can borrow. The city cannot then borrow another eight hundred thousand dollars just because you guys authorized it. You're still limited to what you can actually pay out for separating.
Now, the additional unused authorization can be used in future years, or it's only for that year's?
It depends on how the authorization is worded. So if it's worded where it's just for split and, and split separation payment, then it will follow in into future years, and if worded where it's just for fiscal year twenty, separation payment, then it will follow with all kinds of paperwork, the authorization.
Gotcha. Thank you. Yes.
And the, the analysis that CMA did at the council's request, their, their revenue projection for the city came in at three point eight seven five million, less than we're budgeting for. Can you address the difference?
What, which revenue? I actually don't have to report with me, but which revenue?
They, they projected seventy-nine point five nine million in revenue, and we're budgeting to almost eighty-three and a half. So there's a three, almost a three point nine million dollar discrepancy.
So you have details on which line for the discrepancy during?
Well, they have categories here, yeah. It's, uh, I, I'm.
All of that?
I'm gonna assume that you've had to see the report. It's not the same report, it's the same, it's the report that the Council and C M A. Analysis of the budget.
It's the one that's the other way around.
That's not. This, this was a report that the Council requested our, our new financial advisor, um, it's on page three. In the twenty-twenty budget analysis table. Though they reversed the, um.
Actually, the, the report man that you just handed to us is what the city clerk just handed to all of us. This is, this is.
Okay, so their projected revenues are eighty-three point five million?
No, they got, they got the columns backwards. I, I, I use the calculator. In actuality, their, their budget projection is seventy-nine, five, none, three, one, four, seven. They, I don't know why they did that, but they reversed the, the sums and the halves.
I can actually look into each of these lines and discuss with them, but I don't have time to do that.
Right, right.
The biggest one I can see right now is their real property tax projection of forty-one million is incorrect because the real property taxes are four, are over forty-five million dollars this budget. So, I'd say, you, you see their real property projection of forty-one point two million? If you go to page forty-four of the budget, our raise by taxation is forty-five point four million. So that's the biggest discrepancy.
Well, I mean, they said they're doing that feature, though, okay. I don't, I don't know what criteria they use, but if we can clarify.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, you see, and they could just report to get a, a quick leave under the circumstances, but the discrepancy is certainly worth it.
And if we can just find out why that, that's all.
Absolutely.
And then, uh, I guess this was something that I, I guess I've not represented for the Council in this format before. Um, I, I guess the city has operated at a deficit now since twenty fifteen, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, then the city has a five point two million dollar deficit since twenty fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, wow, or something like that.
So, I would even receive the copy of the financial statements, it would have been in, did you receive the two thousand eighty financial statements? They're online as well. The two thousand eighty financial statements?
D O I, okay.
Yes, D O I, D O I, this financial statement would have had that number in.
Okay, so now, so we're showing right now, according to, again, C M A, that our unassigned fund balance is minus, uh, eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So, does that mean we don't have any, basically any liquid assets at this time?
Well, unassigned fund balances, a fund balance that's not specific to certain items such as debt service or long-term sealable, something of that nature. So that doesn't necessarily mean the city doesn't have any, but it definitely indicates that it has very little.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the Council? Okay, um, on the proposed budget, uh, anyone from the audience care to speak? Mr. Lester?
I do have a lot of questions and it's a little awkward trying to ask questions and then having people go on, so I'm asking, please keep your answers to one sentence.
Want to go through them and then we'll try and answer them?
No, fill us in all the time. Okay, um, the debt service we just heard went down from, uh, as far as the capital budget goes, went down from nine point five million to seven million, I don't know the exact numbers. Yet in the budget on page three, we have the debt service going down from thirteen million to twelve point nine million.
Well, we talked about nine point five versus seven point two, that's principal only, because that's what matters. Only principal payment reduces the debt service. The difference between that and your thirteen million dollar number is interest.
Okay, so they're paying the thirteen million in interest?
No, the difference between the thirteen million and nine point five is interest. It's local lane interest, it's the difference between the two numbers, that's it.
Okay, but here, our debt service is only going down a hundred thirty-seven thousand. Total, according to your budget, according to page three. Okay, um, on page forty, you have credit card fees of sixty-five thousand, what are those?
So as people pay for items with credit cards, such as beach passes, sandy passes, anything, not for, as they pay for items with credit cards, does the city have to pay?
Yet in the recreation, yet the recreation department, if you have credit card, they charge you and a lot of places charge you, why aren't we charging?
Certain places we do and certain places it's just not feasible.
Why is it not feasible? You just add a number on them.
Well, would you, but I want to speak to that.
Now, that's one sentence, if you can.
With respect to the recreation, it's built into the software, so it's automatically done.
So it's a software?
It's a software action.
So we can't add two percent of?
Every place else is a manual machine and that's the hack.
Okay, the tax assessment, how can we don't use, um, Nassau County's assessment? I mean, I, there must be a reason, I, I, it's really curiosity. We just heard they have a one million dollar software program to assess.
If you want to move on to the next question, I'll hand it over when you're done and he'll answer that, he's got to answer.
The publicity, we're spending two hundred sixty-five thousand in the budget and I just heard we have fifty thousand you want to bring people in. Do we have any data that shows a return for investment on these dollars? No, okay, um, on page seventy, we have, uh, judgments allocated three hundred fifty in reserve. Then on page forty, we have allocated six hundred thousand, is that a total of nine hundred fifty thousand projections?
Can you give us page number again?
Sure, page forty, allocated six hundred thousand projections. And then on page seventy, we have three hundred fifty allocated in reserves. I'm, I'm just not sure if that's a nine hundred fifty or if it's only six hundred.
So page forty is a total for the entire department, not a specific one?
Uh, judgments, I'm just talking about, what, what does the city have allocated to pay our judgments?
So it's the six hundred thousand dollars in the nineteen thirty, that, those are judgments that are paid and they're not.
So we have nothing out there for the payment, hundred million or whatever it is?
There is no judgment, I would say, for payment at all?
Correct.
There's nothing associated with that, no?
No, not any, but there is a judgment.
There's no reserve, that's a great assumption.
It, it hasn't gone to inquest yet, there is a judgment.
There is a, a full judgment that has not gone to a damages inquest.
Inquest, but there is a judgment, thank you.
Mr. Plummer, can you, uh, speak to why you're here? Why we have our assessment department in City of Long Beach?
When Nassau County originally did the reassessment back in two thousand and three, it was analyzed, the city won't be sure to adopt these county laws and New York City office, no property tax services, this is the follow. And it's decided that since the county won't share the guarantee and they won't guarantee the assessment law, we'd still have to defend it and it probably will also save them more money to defend their law. Um, so we have to manage our actions, uh, and it costs a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer. I think so, Mr. Ramon's in? Name of that person.
Hey, Verona. There is no doubt that our city is in a financial crisis. We have deteriorated reserves, skyrocketing debt and out of control spending. Immediate action is needed. We cannot wait until after the election or until our consultants assess our financial stake. If we do not act, Long Beach will not be affordable for future generations. This is why I am proposing two million dollars in budget changes. Before I propose my budget change, I want to discuss the city's accounting. The budget technically is balanced, but this is because we overestimated revenue and underestimated expenses. Our budget projects a thirty-three percent increase in Long Mountain Railroad Beach revenue and a fifteen percent increase in beach charges. Though the beach marketing plan that Mr. Agostini discussed earlier may be successful, I think it is unrealistic to assume massive increases in beach revenue. Additionally, the budget assumes a twenty-five percent increase in recreation concessions, a nine percent increase in membership fees, fifteen percent for recreation races and thirty-three percent in other recreation income. Again, I believe these assumptions are unrealistic. The city has also underestimated its social security cost by a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. This overestimation in revenue and underestimation in expenses will cause the city to have a six hundred eighty-eight thousand dollar deficit. Because our reserves are minimal, I propose any cuts fill this deficit, then reduce borrowing, then reduce our tax limit. Firstly, the city must reduce contingency by a hundred thousand dollars. Contingency has now been used as an emergency fund, but instead to, as a slush fund for political causes. Recently, contingency was used to assist the local development corporation hire Paris Beach attorneys. Vehicle gas should also be reduced by twenty thousand dollars as administrators should not be able to take home cars and ask the city to foot the gas bill. Additionally, a green initiative should be implemented where employees will be encouraged to use city cars less. Todd Shapiro and Associates should be eliminated since they serve as the city's public relations firm despite there being two full-time employees in the public relations department. The city should implement a higher increase for full-time employees with an exception for the city manager and controller. This budget hires a new associate engineer and administrative aide. The city cannot afford more full-time staff and this staff should not be hired. Finally, the city collects an underwhelming amount of ticket revenue. Lynbrook, Miniola, Garden City, Cedarhurst and Rockwell Center all collect more in ticket revenue than Long Beach despite having smaller populations, smaller police forces and not being one of the largest tourist attractions on Long Island. The city's police force and court enforcement officers should work to collect much more ticket revenue on, or there should be changes in police administration. I propose these changes along with more than thirty others to help bring Long Beach on the path to fiscal solvency. Finally, I ask the city to release any budget amendments at least forty-eight hours before the budget vote so stakeholders can have time to analyze them. And finally, when making budget decisions, please consider the next generation. I'm active in the city because I want my generation to be able to live in this great city. Please make the right decision, reduce waste, eliminate patronage, reduce borrowing and cut taxes. Thank you.
Anybody else here? Mr. Gussel?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Gussel, Long Beach, that's the command, scribbling margins. Um, there's a statement that this Marano said during his presentation about the, uh, capital, uh, project, uh, budget. And I'm roughly quoted here, it says, we find the capital improvement, so the people using it down the road, uh, pay for it. Uh, it's hard to square that statement with the city's, uh, practice of routinely borrowing to pay separation payments. Separation payments are for time, uh, approved by employees sometime in the past, uh, those services were delivered, those hours were already given over and yet we routinely bond, which means future generations who receive no benefit for that, to pay for, for that time. Now, this particular budget, you guys are allocating another one point eight million in borrowing for separation payments. I would suggest that you consider, I know it's a politically, an election year and a double-digit, uh, increase would, would be political suicide, but you should make it on this budget and not include this borrowing. Uh, budget, uh, borrowing, separation payments are dead practice, but you don't have to take my word for it. The New York City Control Office has routinely, uh, and repeatedly stated that to you guys in every budget message that they've delivered here the last several years, just as routinely you guys ignore it. Now, that a given practice has gone on for years and years is no excuse to continue. Uh, we used to be able to own other people. Uh, women didn't used to have the right to vote. Both of these practices went on for many years. Uh, that they went on for many years, that, that slavery and slavery went on for many years did not date them right. Similarly, saddling future generations for costs for which they receive no benefit is wrong. That the city has been doing it for as long as it has, does not change that back. And I just wanted to comment on Mr. Agostini's, uh, comment on the Fire Department. Let's see, recall, you guys had the I C M V, uh, in here a few years ago, and they did an extensive study of Fire Department. I gotta think that they took a look at the schedule and what possible, uh, alternatives could have been implemented and, uh, perhaps resulted in a safer sort of city. I'm gonna tell you this, this has been looked at, been looked at by myself, it's been looked at by many other people. Twenty-four hour schedule is the most efficient schedule. There are other departments like New York City that, that use nines and fifteens, nine-hour shifts and fifteen-hour shifts to make it to twenty-four hours. The problem with that is it requires you to hire many more firefighters, many more bodies than you have now. In fact, it's, it's such a bad arrangement that the F P N Y offered straight twenty-four hour tours for this guys several years ago, ten, maybe fifteen years ago, and was rejected by the union because it would have, uh, allowed the city to reduce the overall number of firefighters. So it suggested that twenty-four hour schedule is somehow, uh, the culprit in, in driving, uh, costs of, the alternative is hiring or the alternative is nines and fifteens, either one's gonna cost you more money.
Thank you. I think what he was saying is if someone isn't on overtime, it's not two hours, right, it's a whole shift, it's twenty-four hours of overtime. So it is, I think that's what you're referring to, that's all. Um, yes, Mr. Guinness?
I just wanted to address the New York City Controller's letter that you've all received and made sense, I believe. Um, in the letter, the Controller's office advises, advises the Council to review their sewer rent budget and potentially increase, um, or lower the revenue by two hundred and seventy thousand, has that, is that being done?
We have a resolution on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then also the, um, Controller recommends that cash flow protections be sent, is that going to be done as well?
What they recommended was that cash flows be included in the budget document.
Okay, we have plans to do that. We, the Council has no plans to do what the Controller asks?
It's a recommendation to include cash flows and I'm not a very ready government local government that includes cash flows in the budget.
So we're going to not, not respond to their request? Or adhere to their request? Thank you. I also want to point out that, um, I'm very disappointed in this budget process. I think the public has, has pleaded with this Council to try to make some changes, um, to, to put their heads together, to talk to each other. Instead I hear, I hear silence from some members and it's my understanding that I hear silence. Can you just try to do something instead of Mr. Verona doing your work? And, um, I hope that next year things will be different. Thank you.
Anybody else care to speak? Mr. Pinto?
Good evening, Sam Pinto, Long Beach Department of Firefighters. Uh, well, I appreciate Mr. Gussel asking questions on behalf of the Fire Department. Um, thank you, Jay, but your questions and representations don't cover my membership, but I still appreciate your, your enthusiasm. Um, these are directed primarily to Mr. Ramon. Um, you spoke earlier that you had the opportunity to speak directly with members of your administration about questions with the budget in general, but you found the need to, uh, point out specifically your public safety personnel as being issued, which is something you could, you can ask these questions in private, but I, I, I know there's no coincidence based on your best action statements that there's no love for the Fire Department, professional firefighters, I mean, there's no shot there.
That's untrue, that's untrue.
Um, I, okay.
That's untrue.
Okay, I've heard otherwise, I've heard actually you said that the current test that was just taken, hiring the personnel, not one person will be hired off of that. Is that not true?
I'm very, we need, uh, additional firefighters.
Okay, but did you not say that not one person will be hired off this list?
I, that's not my decision to make, I did not say.
Can you just repeat, so, did you say that, that not one person will be hired off this list?
I, I don't believe I said that.
Just answer the question straight forward.
I just did this.
Say no then, if you didn't.
I just did.
Say no.
Please continue.
Okay, uh, it's fine, so.
I don't control the hiring, so I don't know.
Statement towards, I, I understand that.
The administration will hire if they deem it necessary. We put out a test. We put out a test, because in order to try and decrease overtime, and in order to maintain the minimum staffing agreement that is enjoyed by the Fire Department, we need more hiring.
Not just enjoyed by the Fire Department?
Actually, I can tell you what I said. I said, "I wish I took the test."
Sure, but did you also say that not one person could be hired?
No.
Okay, I heard otherwise, good source. The thing is, like, so, you're comparing overtime percentages, that's not a fair number. The easy way to reduce overtime numbers is to hire staff. That's it. No, what I'm saying is you took a proportion, 17%, the overall budget numbers have decreased significantly.
Yes, I said that too.
And then you think, why?
I could give you credit for that.
Would you give credit to?
The Fire Department.
That was a connection, no disrespect to the Fire Department, that was a very small considered agreement within the union and the administration, not the Fire Department administration. But you won't recognize that?
I don't see the difference. I was the Fire Department Union, yes, the UFA. I said I'd like to thank the Fire Department and the city for coming to terms to save the taxpayer dollars. In essence, yes.
Right, but then you also said, "Have we cut overtime numbers?"
I didn't say that. I said, "Is it easier to cut numbers?"
Is it not easy?
And I was told no. I was told no.
Good, okay, well, because you know what, those overtime numbers correlate with safe staffing numbers, like the amount of people who work a day have their own.
So, I'm supposed to ask questions about a department that has a high overtime?
No, there's no coincidences here. You know why?
What do you mean?
There's no coincidences here.
The two highest departments in the city that have the highest overtime, I asked questions about, that's my job. Ms. McGinnis will tell you that that's my job.
You should have asked, "Have the budget numbers gone down?", not, "Have the budget numbers gone down?"
I asked if we could cut those numbers, because they're awfully high, and I was told by both departments, "No", and I was satisfied by both Commissioner Tagneys and Mrs. Tydall's answers.
It doesn't make a difference if it's straight time or overtime. If the budget is inflated, if the budget is low, you have to manage.
It doesn't.
Why? You want a low budget, you want a high budget, depending on overtime?
Overtime is something that the city can control. If we shut down overtime completely, and let's say beach maintenance is zero, then lots of projects don't happen, and they just don't happen, right? But we cannot do that to the security of our city, for the Fire Department and the Police Department. We can't just end the overtime there, and I was pointing that out, actually, that your department gets a half a million dollars in overtime because the city needs it. That's what I was pointing out.
But you also left out the fact that the budget numbers are lower year to year.
I said, a few years back, it was $800,000, and together, collectively, we have brought it down.
And you have higher.
I don't understand what you're trying to do here, because I'm on your side. I actually stood up to $500,000 that your department gets in overtime.
I'm very simply trying to express one thing.
No, no, that's not what you're trying to do.
You just asked, you don't understand. The question is, is it overtime, or is it regular salary, a human inflated budget in general, right? And say, $5 million, and it goes down to $3 million, but there's less straight time and there's more overtime, you still went down $2 million. You failed to recognize that. You wanted to say, "Look at us, they didn't apply overtime because they were having a staffing, you depleted the staffing, so people have to work shifts."
Which is why we put out a test.
Okay, so you're gonna hire them.
No, that is up to the city.
Sit down. Thank you very much.
Anyone else here?
Just one thing, I looked at the past six years of the Controller's report on overtime, and I think the issue is more, if you have a budget, you have overtime, who's ever charging that department, you hold it accountable. That's it. I don't think it's been done even the last six years. As far as the assessment software upgrade, have we received an RFP on that software amount? It was quoted, I think Mr. Flammus said a billion dollars. I don't know if that's accurate. I think you could get a substantial reduction in that number. The other point is, I think the county, I would never use the county software, I would never use the county, because Laura Collins' reassessment is to correct things that were done and promulgated since 2008, '09, and if I'm incorrect about that, Mr. Flammus can correct me. It's always better to have your own assessment department. They know the properties, they know the individual streets, they know, and this is by no means standing up for the assessment department, this is fact. Don't you know the neighborhood we do have to know?
Yes, I know the boroughs.
So, my concern is, I've done RFPs for assessment software, and I just urge you to do that, because I don't think it's gonna be anywhere near that. Just keep it in the back of your mind, that's number two. That's all I have for now, I'm sure, I didn't intend to speak of this, but...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought you said, "Using the county software would cost $1 million, and that's why we didn't want to do it."
I have a came in and gave a report back then, before my council.
They gave a report to all the cities and towns, and the cost, it was to do the assessment and also do the collection, and the costs for each town was approaching $1 million.
For each town? It was $1 million per town, not based on population or parcels or anything like that?
It was, those that have all population.
Because you can't allocate, you know, 10,000 properties to a 35,000, 35,000 new property, it's gotta be relative.
Right, so I think that's why he's advocating not using the county, and that in a year or two, we're gonna have to do the upgrade or get new software of our own, so we can continue doing what we're doing.
Totally agree with that, totally agree with that. I thought you were looking at the new assessment software.
Possibly, worst case scenario.
Okay, and that point is, if you do, you get an RFP, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deloire. Anybody else here to speak on the budget? Any council members have any final questions or anything else they could ask?
I'm not sure if I should be speaking about this now or afterwards, so I'm just gonna speak now.
Only budget later.
Yeah.
Only budget later.
So, any comments and things that you discovered here? You can tweak the budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good, then I should be speaking now. I'm about to bat right now on board buses. I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, so I can stop going on about this, so, the D O T budget is the same as last year, but there's no addition, no subtraction, it's kind of a set, so, nothing major. Okay, all right. So, the current budget, then, is not to return the Point Lookout bus or the Southern Beach trolley, that trolley is, you know, a little bit of that. So, we need to move people around to the island unless that $50,000 marketing plan means bringing people to Long Beach so they can walk between Burger King and Five Guys. I think that people deserve a little bit more than that, so we really do need to move people around. And did anyone see today's Gotham, Gothamist report on Long Beach? It's one of the beaches to go to. They talk about, "Do not drive your car here, you're gonna do range leaks." So, our west end and our east end shops, they deserve the business, the business that can come from this trolley. Our residents also need another option, those who drive vehicles. So, I'm asking that the beach trolley be returned on weekends and relaunched with the marketing that it deserves, that it never got. There would never a trolley signed upstairs, like it was designed to fail. In addition, I'd like to see the Point Lookout bus returned. So, the beach trolley cannot return if the city council does not allow a little more funding and budget for it. In addition to returning, even if it's just two days a week, we need new timetables and bus maps. So, I brought these for you, I stole this from a bus rider, I felt really bad, I do hope he has another copy of it, because I literally stole it. This is what we have, we have these duct tapes down at the train station. Can you just pass this? In case anyone's never seen it, the bus map that we have, unless available, only shows the east loop and the west loop, doesn't show the Point Lookout service, it doesn't show Shopper's Special, and it doesn't acknowledge the late-night service. This is the other bus map, here, one more for you. This is, I stole all of them from downstairs, because people should not be looking at that. That is the Southern Beach trolley that, that map has been circulating, and that service was cut last year. So, we have two maps and schedules floating around, neither of them are really after it, and we cannot get these fixed, and we cannot get people on their buses and out of their cars unless they have access to this information. And they cannot get access to this information because Brenda Tassell, our head of duty, has the tools that he needs to get these reprinted and to get our services back. So, if you could all consider that, we need a little more, could you please direct Rob to bump up a little more, so that we can get our buses back?
Thank you, Ms. Blanchard. I totally agree with you that we need that trolley.
Someone wants to speak to the actual bus maps, because it's been over close to a year. I know this was raised here, and several other members of the community sent emails with concerns with respect to the bus map. So, where are we with that? Is there an update? Are we moving forward with the corrections, being that at this time, we're trying to maximize the amount of people who use their services?
I was just being aware of those issues last week with respect to that, so, now I have to, thank you, and now I have to find out if we, if there are, of the maps themselves, if there are any shortcomings. The trolley services, there are a lot of, there's a current plan with respect to.
Get here, you can hear it.
I'm sorry, I just asked about the, I assumed that the trolley was coming back on the weekends, it's been stable for the last two years. I am talking to your director, Jen, to discuss that now.
Who is the director? Brenda Tassell?
Yes, Ms. Miranda?
One of the suggestions I heard on reducing the budget is to eliminate a new associate engineer. I'd like to request the council to be very careful about doing that. We really would use them, of course, we saw a list of projects we have to deal with, it's just Joe and I, and there's several reasons that I would ask that you not take that out of the budget. Number one, model our salaries, Joe's mine, and new engineer would be charged in FEMA projects. We have a ton of projects that we're managing, whether we have an outside engineer working on it, somebody's tasked to do it with an engineer. Number two, Joe has been here since he was 14 years old, he's probably about five years away from retiring. I'm gonna be 66 in a couple of years, and I'm gonna have it. So, one of the most important things, and one of the big reasons I keep relying on Joe is all his institutional knowledge. We need to bring another engineer along, start teaching that institutional knowledge to that person, and really train them on all the history of Long Beach, the projects, so that, you know, five, six years down the road, from both Joe and I have gone, there's somebody here that has that institutional knowledge. So, I would ask the council not to consider that cut in the budget. Thank you.
During tonight's presentation, I heard you say that you and Joe were able to do the engineering work on one of the projects and save $40,000 to $50,000. So, two projects like that, basically, the engineer, right?
That's correct, and that would be us another field person where some of these other projects where we do grow great instructions, we can use that engineer to work with Joe and I, and really, you say, more money.
Right, thank you, Commissioner.
Chris, can you speak to, I think there seems to be some confusion with respect to, I guess, the ownership of this budget, in terms of who created this budget and what our role is with the budget? Because I'm hearing a lot of conversations, people come up, they kind of said that this is our budget, so can you clarify that?
Well, so...
Get us going to clarify that, because this is technically the acting city manager's budget that is presenting to us?
That he proposed, that's correct. And then, we can create what's called an errata sheet, basically amendments to the budget, to either lower or increase any lines that we deem necessary. And as I discussed earlier with, say, the police overtime, you can't just willingly cut stuff because if you wanna cut it, and you can't just add stuff either, because your line adds stuff. So, as of right now, it is the proposed city manager's budget, and once it gets adopted, then it's the city council's budget. Does any city council member have anything to add to that?
No, I thank you for the clarification, because I know that even for those of you who are watching News 12, or some of the other media outlets, they've already spoken to the idea that the council has already agreed to the proposed budget, and I just wanted to make that clear, since it's very important for the audience and those who are watching live streams.
Thank you, Councilor Oromo. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Fury. Name an episode, right?
Yeah, Fury, Long Beach. To John's point, for the presentation tonight, John, thank you for that. If John Miranda needs a person to help us offset costs from market, from food, I think we should get it. I think we need to look at other departments in this building that just recently new hires and eliminate those positions to give one that benefits us far, has far much greater benefit to the city and to the his department than what it does, than why we hired that person to do it. Or there's multiple positions like that. So, if John needs a guy, needs somebody that's worth $100,000, $120,000 job, he should get that guy, and we should, you know, move some other people out, positions that are not as he is, John's position is.
Sure, we actually, we removed a position from this year's budget in order to have the, this new position, that position came from economic development. As far as remaining other positions, you know, I'm not sure, Ms. Fury, what position should we target here, but we have 13 exempt employees left.
We just hired one, you're 100 to 20.
We didn't just hire one. Any other questions or comments about the proposed budget? Anything else from the council? No, okay, see, no hands. Open the next year.
Very popular here tonight, is the ordinance, the mandatory ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding border and border distribution.
So, with respect to that, I just think we'll, Christian Miranda.
Do you think?
I mean, Commissioner, you just basically described some of the recent wars, separating reasons as they apply to the water quality.
Right, we have been operating for the last couple of years under consent order from the O State D E C, and we have been not only doing a lot of repair work down at the sewer plant, the primary tanks that have to be rebuilt, sand filters that have to be redone, we need to add processes for the elimination of ammonia, and also for dechlorination. Both those processes require more chemicals than we usually have been adding in the past, so, quite before, used to, the last process was chlorinating the effluents, so that it would put any bacteria out of the system, but then you can't put any chlorine out into Reynolds Channel, so, after you chlorinate all the bacteria, you gotta dechlorinate. So, that's quite an expensive process, a very highly toxic chemical, requires special handling, and so, we have that. The sand filter requires additional chlorine doses to keep it from sloughing off and stopping the filtration. We've just spent $2 million picking out the digesters, which, you know, have 20 years' worth of sludge building up in them. When we remove the sludge on a regular basis, those digesters need to be down on a regular basis. We're just about complete with all the work at the wastewater plant.
Any questions from the council? Any questions for the public, for Commissioner Miranda?
Yes.
Good evening, Fran Nielsen, Long Beach. John, I just have a question, very simple question. Based on minimum usage, obviously, we need to have all those things up. That's not my question. My question is, is the, how much difference will the minimum build be, from what it is now? Is there a percentage amount, or what's the difference that is being back? Or what's the difference that it means back? I think that's a really good question.
The rates are going up 2%.
Oh, that's what it is. Okay. So, if the bill will be, it means minimums 2% every three months.
About 50%.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. You were speaking specifically about sewer?
Yeah, water.
Water, yeah.
Yeah, that's what the water.
It's kind of all... I mean, you...
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments about the proposal for the order distribution increase? 2%? Anything else from the council? Seeing no hands, I close the hearing. Open up the next hearing.
Our fourth public hearing is for a local law amendment charter of the city of Long Beach by sewer rents.
I want to, in light of the most recent review from the Office of the State Controller, I'm going to motion to amend the resolution to state 130% to comply and also affirm the New York State Controller's recommendation, which was in response to our proposed budget. And that amendment would be included at the end, will be in the last clause.
Got that?
I didn't call the ID yet, but we're still in public hearing. So, we can hold off on that until we call it to the council.
Got you. Try it again in a couple minutes. Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the council for Commissioner Miranda about the sewer? I think he did go over the high cost of paying our effluent to make it consistent with the DEC's requirements. Anyone have any questions? No? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. Seeing no hands. Oh, I'm sorry. I see Ms. Tressler. You want to just... Hey, Brian, you want to just bring the microphone over?
Is the fire medic system included? Is that what we're talking about now? Fire system?
That's your wire.
So, that's what we are talking about now, yes?
No, we're up to sewer. The next one. Mr. Morano, you want to speak about the sewer? Name an address for the record.
I'm just wondering a little bit about the sewer budget or the water pollution control. Why are we increasing the amount of plant operators? If you look on page 69 of the budget, why are we increasing the amount of plant operators? Yes, this is why we're increasing sewer rates. We need to pay for the increase in sewer costs, which is plant operator. One of the costs is our increase in plant operator. So, Ms. Hightower, if Miranda can answer my question.
We're not increasing. Trainees went after a certain amount of time. Once they get their licenses, they automatically have to be moved from a trainee to an operator. So, as you can see, the trainees went down and the plant operators went up.
I want to please.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else about sewer rates? Mr. Miranda.
Just a comment on the number of operators that we have down in the wastewater plant. The EPA requires a certain minimum number of operators operating plants safely.
And they have all different kinds of certification.
They all have the local certification before they can run the plant under all.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else about the sewer rates? Okay. Seeing no hands, I close the hearing.
Okay. Moving on to the regular calendar. I want a resolution to authorize the adoption of the capital program for five years from 2019 to June 30, 2024 inclusive.
Make a motion to table the item.
I second.
Hey, Chairman. Big Chairman, stop touching me.
Please, please.
Motion table item number four?
Yes.
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 I am serious resolution authorizing the adoption of the budget for fiscal year commencing from October 19, 2019 to June 30, 2020, permitting yourself set for the area determining fixing the real estate tax revenue.
I make a motion to table the item.
Yes.
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 I have three is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding order and order distribution. Hearing this, we can tell on this item. Item four is a local law amendment charter of the city of Long Beach regarding sewer rents.
Yes. So, once again, in light of the most recent review from the Office of the State Controller, I am motion to amend the resolution to state 130% to comply or affirm the New York State Controller's recommendation in response to our proposed budget.
I second the item.
Motion to amend the item, change the percentage of the rate from 125 to 130, correct?
That's correct. Okay.
Councilor Benda?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Item 22 has been tabled. So, item three is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding order and order distribution. Who choose to move the option this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Yes.
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 Item four is a local law amendment charter of the city of Long Beach regarding sewer rents. Who choose to move the option this item, hasn't ended? Second?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes. Okay. We now move on to our good welfare portion. As everyone knows, we have three minutes of time. From the top, thank you, Ryan. Have a good NCCF. Thank you, Mrs. Hightower. Mr. Verona, Eddie Verona.
Before I start, I just wanted to point out once again how, though, even though my card was not moved, Mr. McHireman, once again, was playing with the cards. He was touching them. And I've asked him repeatedly, and I've asked Mr. Ramon, to instruct Mr. McHireman to not play with the cards. And every time he touches the cards, I'm going to ask the COA to please put the camera on him because it is wrong. And I think there's no coincidence that people who oppose the administration end up at the bottom when Mr. McHireman touches the cards regardless of whether, when they came in. I also wanted to address a, Ms. Hightower's comment, unfortunately she left. She said this a couple meetings ago to me about how the city, when we were implementing CMA, that I had asked the city if we submit our five-year financial plan to the New York State Comptroller as required by deficit financing. And she said, "We do." Yet I have foiled for that from the New York State Comptroller, who has said, "No records exists." And I also have a foil out for the city, which, again, has not been responded to. I also wanted to talk about CMA in terms of the budget. Our comptroller's position, though Mr. Agostecia had said the comptroller is not about providing strategic advice according to his own budget. If you look at the comptroller's section, it says that the comptroller is not just an accounting person, but they are also a chief financial officer and should provide advice to the city. So, I think Mr. Agostecia should read his own budget. And that $144,000 for CMA and to allow us to say that we need CMA, we need to spend $144,000, and yet we cannot make any major budgetary action without CMA, I think is wrong. And again, we cannot continue to pass, to kick the can down the rope. We cannot continue to keep saying borrow, 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 spend, spend, spend. And there needs to become a point where we need to start saying enough is enough. Now, I have some budget questions for tonight. If you look on page of the budget, excuse me. If you look on page 45 of the budget, I'm wondering why there's a 33% increase on youth services after school for West Camp? Also, my budget question was not answered, whether we have any money allocated for arbitration, police arbitration decision that is coming up very soon. And also, I wanted to address how Mr. Miranda's criticism of my cut to an associate engineer. If my budget questions were answered, that Mr. Agostecia found unnecessary, that he did not have enough time to answer my budget questions. Though if those, one of the questions I asked is why are we hiring an associate engineer? So, that simply could have been answered in two minutes by Mr. Miranda, as he just did.
That's your time, Mr. Verona, or a little?
It shows that it wasn't a lack of time by Mr. Agostecia wanting to understand my questions. It was a lack of will. He did not want to answer my questions.
Thank you, Verona. Any questions, frankly, in our... Thank you, Mr. Verona.
Again, this is the disrespect by the city.
Senator, if you're shooting, I'm not going to get to a comment with you. You're still... Now, I can respond, right? That's not true.
It seems I can't hear you.
Eddie, let him answer your question. Please go sit down.
I can't. Can you answer my question?
You have to sit down first, and I'll answer your questions.
Again, there's the disrespect by this administration.
Okay, that's it. I'm not going to answer any questions. Because I can't seem to answer that being in front. That's very rude. And I just want to point out, President Ramon, that I never said the comptroller doesn't provide strategic advice. Of course, the comptroller does. What we're trying to do with CMA is introduce another layer to sort of, to fabricate the function of the director of finance where they were traditionally before and add that, layer that in for the comptroller function for additional support. That's the purpose of CMA. Right now, the comptroller does serve as a chief financial officer in many respects. And the comptroller is overburdened. And if we're looking for somebody that more of a finance, provide that additional respect. And that's all I ever said with respect to the comptroller. I never said, you already never say the comptroller doesn't provide strategic advice. That's absurd.
Okay. So, now we've had the clarification. I just think it's important that everyone has a fair hearing. Everyone has a right to come up and ask questions. We may agree or disagree with the questions. We may also disagree with the way that the questions are framed. But we still have the right to give people a fair answer. If we can't do that, then the whole purpose of us having this meeting... This is the whole purpose of the meeting. Excuse me. The whole purpose of the meeting is to serve all of you who are sitting in the audience. Everyone has our, this is a democracy. Everyone has a right to come up and ask questions. We don't always have to agree. We can disagree to agree that we're going to respect each other. That's all.
All right.
It's very simple. Doesn't take that much. Sociality is something that costs us nothing. So, we can do that here because all of us care about the city.
Thank you, Mr. Delore. Mr. Delore.
You didn't mic Delore's voice. Are we going to let Torres say, you know, we can always try to give each other respect? And... David, of course. David, if you don't mind. I don't know if you're aware of this, but I'm just going to read something because I figured I'd... Write it down when I read it, okay? I am requesting the current city council to write a letter to County Executive Laura Curran and Mr. Moon, the current county assessor, to explain why the rate charged to every homeowner in the city of Long Beach is higher than the city of Point Cove. If you look on the sheet that you currently have, maybe you don't have it in front of you, there's a county police headquarters tax. The rate charged to the city of Long Beach is 109.894. Okay? Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. If you all live here, this may even save you individual money, if I am correct. This is something councilwoman, county legislator Denise Ford had mentioned about, I think, $11 billion in savings potentially. And I don't know if county legislator Ford is still here. Okay. She would probably know more than I do on this one. But in the city of Long Beach, we have a police department, we have a headquarters. All residents throughout the county are charged this rate. As you can see, Rockville Center, Malibu, Inland Brook, and the city of Point Cove are all charged fairly similar rates of 87.761. We in the city of Long Beach are being charged on the general tax a higher rate. If you know the answer to this, because I don't, and I don't think anybody else does, I will recommend that you, as the elected officials, write a letter to the county executive and David Moon, the assessor, asking for them to explain why that rate is what it is. If there's an explanation, that's fine. We could share it with myself and the residents here. But it may save approximately $200 in your general town tax bill. The reason I compared Rockville Center, Malibu, and I selected those is because they do have a village police department. I can't pick Merritt. I can't pick Baldwin because they don't have their public rights in county. So, it is comparing apples to apples. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delore. I'm curious if it's based on population, but we'll definitely find out an answer to that.
I don't know.
Right. We definitely find out the answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Matt Hadler. Here's he had left. Mr. Greg Kalnisky?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Boyd Lester?
Just one comment, great question. Ms. Moore, you're right. Everybody should have a right to ask questions. What I think is they should have a right to get the answers.
I support that 100%.
And not at the expense of them being able to ask questions. And this entire procedure is a false. The idea that we can come up and, well, watch them ask good questions. And they're curious. They're not asking the questions to be argumentative. They are curious. And yet, they don't, they can't get a good answer because it's running on their time. Now, for years, it never worked that way. And then January, well, the president and the boy decided to change it. And it's not working. And I think you see it. And I kind of would ask the entire city council to change that because people come up and they're asking a question. And it's nice to get an answer.
Anyone is free to answer it anytime.
What?
Anyone is free to answer a question at any time.
Well, it's a free... It takes their time, Emily. It never was like that before until you decided to change it without consulting any of the other council members. You decided to change it. So, now people come up and they can't get an answer. So now people come up and they can't get an answer to their question, or they have to say, as I had to say today, keep it to one sentence. And there's so much more to say. There was no reason to change it. There was your time. You guys are answering. You could control the time. The other thing I'd like to bring up is I've been asking now for months for a defibrillator in the pool. I can't understand why we can't get it. The fire department says they have a couple of stairs that can be repurposed, and we could get it. It's a matter of life. Why can't we get a defibrillator at the pool? Yes, there's one in the rec center, but you know what? If you go to the pool and something happens, the lifeguard, and it's only one lifeguard there in the morning, the lifeguard has to go downstairs through the locker room to get the defibrillator. There's a space for the defibrillator right there, right on the wall. There's no reason not to put one up. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all agree with that.
Right. It's almost like breakfast.
What?
I thought when you and I spoke, um, emails were exchanged with council and the county manager. I believe that issue is being reviewed.
Yeah, but when you, stop. Yeah, okay. No, no, but as you review.
I just signed, I, I can answer the question. I just signed a purchase order for parts for a defibrillator.
What?
I'm sorry. I just signed a purchase order for parts for the defibrillator for this New York process. I asked you prevention of repurposing, and that's weird. That's the best destination. Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Lynch.
I think I've heard, kind of talked about whatever, where we're going to talk about for, um, so you can just go back and re-listen to what you said. All right. Uh, just quickly, I think one of the smartest things that I've seen happen in the city, this is C M A, is to like to acknowledge that. I think that is just really smart. And I, just, there. Um, so I've been standing up here since two thousand twelve-ish, two thousand eleven, talking about bikes, buses, the movement of people, renegati lines, uh, for a long time, because of that. And I just wanted this council to know that, I, I just have to say a thank you to Denise Ford, uh, extra double making to Greg Kalnitzki, to Brendan Costello, to Robert Agostecia, because finally, after banging my head against a wall, being shut out of City Hall by Jack Chairman, um, and Michael Robinson, I was finally able to have some really great conversations with our government. And I think, Ramon, you and I, we have, we've known each other. I've known you longer than anyone up here, and you know, the subject, what this is. So I would like to just acknowledge these people. And because I really appreciate it not being less than anyone. Um, that's really what I wanted to say.
Thank you. And then busle that we did, that was a couple years ago. That was good?
Yeah, that was actually something we discussed.
We did?
That we need to redo that.
Okay.
Um, we need to make our buses work, but people.
We need to implement the findings of, yes.
That would work.
Thank you.
But I just needed to say thank you.
Appreciate it. Ms. Hesch.
I think, Hesch, just a few random thoughts. Um, the C M A making that financial mistake tonight was a little bit scary. One of the kinds of first things that they've done for us who are paying a lot of money. So somebody slapped their hand. Um, secondly, we only have a few exempts anymore because many of them moved into uni jobs, so you couldn't get rid of them. So that's really why we don't have exempt people anymore. Um, also, I think we hired a P R firm, even though we have a P R department. So I am curious. I saw a couple of, uh, you know, interesting ads. One was the, um, an ad that was really for Long Island, but mentioned Long Beach ironically with somebody skateboarding along the boardwalk. Did we create that ad? Or did the, the county or the state create it?
So those were the Long Islands.
Yeah, Long Island.
Just a couple of Long Islands, yeah.
And did we have to pay credit? No, okay, good. Um, and then another one was of the, the new city Facebook page, which I only saw tonight for the first time, which I'll have to look at. It's good.
Wednesday.
Who did that?
Government Office and some internal work with the government.
Our public relations department, right?
And, and with, and with an outside.
Oh, so do we have to pay anybody extra for it?
I'm a consultant.
So we have to pay somebody. Because we already have a, a P R firm, and people here, we shouldn't have to pay anybody anything extra.
We don't have a P R firm. There's no, there's no outsourced P R firm.
I thought we did. I thought we hired a P R firm.
No, they, that firm has not been here performing work since February, since the end of the year.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, and then also, Mr. Agostecia, you said that the comptroller is overburdened, which certainly she is. Uh, you know, she's only here part-time supposedly, and she has a full-time job somewhere else. So I still don't understand why we don't hire comptroller. I know we pay her per hour, right? Is she making less than a salary with us? She's here so many hours.
I have a number of severance because she's serving me for less than a full-time salary, absolutely.
And is that the reason that we're not hiring someone?
No, we're pretty active, I'd say.
Really?
Yep.
A comptroller sounds like a job that there'd be a lot of them around looking for jobs. Okay, keep at it then. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Jacobso.
Good evening, Jacobso. Long Beach. Just to follow up on a couple of those points, uh, you know, this, this whole three minutes, you know, glance, if we feel like, maybe somebody, I'd like to point out, we're on, wait, three meetings running now, and still no answers from any of the five meetings. And I understand the budget team, but we've got the consultants and assistants below. I find it difficult to believe that nobody has the staff on the cobbler's and answers to residents' questions. But I'm gonna ask again anyway. Uh, Mr. Agostecia, yeah, I'm gonna be sure with that agreement that you're, uh, unlawfully withholding from disclosure. How is the search for permanent city manager going? Can you give us an update on that? How is the search for a permanent comptroller going? Also, I'd like an update on that. Uh, and you sparred with Mr. Lester about terminology, uh, him referring to the fifty million dollars that falls as a judgment. And you took issue with this characterization of that as a judgment. Uh, so if it's not a judgment, then, uh, what do you call it? And can we get a update on the status of that? And just to pull back to the fire department, health condition, um, health condition nature of the defeat, but you guys can't keep medics. You're going through them like under that. Uh, you're not paying enough money. It's a very, very difficult job. Uh, and you, you just can't keep them. You rotated, I think you have three medics that are from the original prop that you hired as the I C M A report. So what are you doing? Is you're covering, uh, those medics at overtime. And when you can't get a medic to cover a medic overtime, you're covering them applying. Now, that's fine. I understand that conservancy be provided by whatever means necessary. Uh, but to then portray the fire department situation as problematic when it's really a function of the, uh, the medic program that you implemented, being such an invisible failure, I don't think it's bad to, to, to beat up on the client over that. Um, and in fact, I call upon you to admit the failure of this program and scrap it and go back to using cross-tree dual apply paramedics.
Thank you, Mr. Gusto. Okay, that's it for tonight's meeting. Thank you everyone for coming. Please get home safe, and we'll announce, uh, the meeting for next week, uh, within the next couple of days.